Get started. Welcome to the February 7th Board of Education meeting for Evanston Township High School District 202. Could we have a roll call, please?
Present.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. All right, so the first item on our agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, is there any written communication?
No written communication this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a bond rating from Moody's Investor Service.
And that would be our CFO, Mary Rodino, who's going to report on this. Mary?
Yes, I don't really have a presentation, so I'll just stay here if that's okay, and I apologize for coming back a couple of minutes late. It didn't occur. I'm never on at the beginning, right? So I was coming. So we just really wanted to officially let you know about the bond rating that the district just received from Moody's Investor Service. There is some information in your packet, including a memo and an outlook and a rating page from Moody's. But we just really wanted to celebrate getting this best possible credit rating from a nationally rated firm. And that is called a AAA rating, and that, I don't know exactly how many times, we don't do this every year, but we've had this rating since 2008. And if I'm not mistaken, just to brag a little bit, I believe we're the only public agency in the city, governmental agency in the city who has that rating. And what it means is that we can borrow money at the cheapest possible rate. So as you all know, we fund our capital improvements program through borrowing money by utilizing bonds and debt certificates. When we get debt certificates, we do not have to get rated. But typically, every four years, we'll do a bond issuance now. And so we're really proud that we've gotten that highest possible rating once again, and that we're able to borrow money in, at the cheapest possible rate. And you'll see later tonight, the board will approve a resolution regarding our $6 million in bonds that we've talked about the last two meetings. And we're happy to say that I think there are already five companies who've expressed an interest in what will be a competitive bond sale tomorrow morning. So we're hoping to get some really great rates. I think we timed it well. And we're super proud of getting that AAA rating. So that's it. Thank you.
Oh, no, I have more to say.
Oh, yes.
I also want to point out that there are, of the over 800 school districts in the state of Illinois, there are only 17 that have a AAA.
Oh, my.
And out of the 13,800 school districts in the United States, there are 90 that have a AAA bond rating. We secured this for the first time in the history of this school in 2008, as Mary said, and we have been able to qualify for it every year since then. So to Mary, but to Mary, but also to the, all the people, the school board, that is so fiscally responsible, and to everybody who has a part in budget administration so that we meet our budget goals and that we keep strong financially, I just say kudos again to the board and to everybody else who makes this possible. It's a big, big deal.
It is a big deal.
Kudos to you all. And I will say that the ratings agencies do cite things like conservative financial policies, and that definitely is a credit to all of you on the board because you certainly not only drive those policies, but you support them and our recommendations. So thank you.
Thank you, Mary. And I know that you have a whole team behind you. And so we just really, really appreciate this. Every, every year when we anticipate this or worry about this, you know, this is coming, and especially during this time, this is such an unstable time in our society. Nothing really can be taken for granted, for sure. So, so I am highly impressed, highly impressed. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It's a great way to start a meeting. That was worth the wait. We waited for about 30 seconds. It's a long wait. All right. Okay, so we have a literacy update. Dr. Beavis is going to leave that, I believe.
And he's joined by Dr. Kiwanah Brown.
Yes. Awesome.
All right. Good evening. Dr. Brown and I are going to provide the board with an update on literacy at the high school. The first thing we need to be aware of is that the 21-22 school year is a reset. We are adjusting to the new reality to meet current needs of our students, academic and social emotional. And here is a chart that I, I came across. And I think it really speaks to, everyone I've showed this chart to kind of pauses and goes, oh, wow. So our current 12th graders, the last time they had a normal pre-COVID school year was when they were in ninth grade. That means that three quarters of the current students at ETHS, three quarters of the grades, were in middle school the last time they had a full uninterrupted school year. So we're going to be dealing with literacy, social emotional learning issues, well-being for quite some time. The purpose of this report is to look at some incoming freshman trend data. We'll look at some tier-two reading interventions, enrollment trend data, and program structure. Give you a peek at the literacy lab, talk about our summer lift program, and talk about our current program supporting literacy. So I want to just preface the discussion by saying that there are gaps in STAR data due to the pandemic. The gaps are similar in the data sets, similar to what we see in our PSAT 8, 9, PSAT 10, and SAT. We're not reporting growth because of the gaps in assessment. Post-2019, 20, and pre-post-2021 school years, we were not able to administer the full battery of assessments to students. That's why you see a gap there. There's a gap in the data, and it's actually represented in the reading proficiency information. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Brown, and Dr. Brown is going to talk us through the next few slides.
All right, so I'm going to just start off by giving you a little background on some of our tier-two freshman reading interventions and our sophomore reading intervention course. So our tier-two freshman reading course is an inclusive course for all students, which includes our students who are typically placed into special ed reading support. So now they're all into this gen ed course together where they have the capability to do the same type of instruction at the same levels. We use a flexible grouping model, and within this model, there's multiple tiers. We have a tier that is foundational decoding. We have a secondary tier that is for comprehension-based. All of these include fluency development. And then we have our third tier that is vocabulary development, comprehension, and fluency-based. So these are multiple tiers that students can move through after they take the STAR test every six weeks. So we look at their progress every six weeks, and depending on their progress, they're able to move through the tiers. So a student who can start at the decoding phase can eventually end up at the top tier where they're actually receiving instruction at the top of the three tiers for the course. Through this course, we identify power literacy standards. So we're using our Common Core literacy standards to instruct students so that they're getting all the same instruction that they're getting in any other course, but they're also being able to get the extra support that they need within the course. Instead of just average grades, we give, we look at standards-based grades for our students in the course. Through this process, we're able to actually see what students are able to do, and we're able to assess them on their growth and not just, you know, being able to achieve the highest score in the class. And we actually want to see what students are able to do, that they're mastering these skills, and that they're able to transfer these skills into other places. Students in these courses are placed according to their RIT scores based off the NWEA map in eighth grade. And through the RIT scores, we're able to see where students are able to perform. The RIT score is just an estimation of a student's instructional level, so we're able to see where they are instructionally when they begin high school, and that where we're able to place them in the course that's most responsive to their needs. In these courses, teachers are able to be responsive to what students need in real time. So we're able to look at STAR data, we're able to look at their performance in class, and we're able to analyze what they actually need in the class in real time and support them in those areas. We're able to address their academic needs, we're able to address their social emotional needs. And this is all through observations in class, through STAR data, and then through students' personal goal settings. We give them the opportunity to tell us what they feel like they need, and we're able to support them in those areas, too. So this chart just shows over the last three years and including this year, the fourth year, our enrollment trends for the course. The blue course is our reading support, and then the red is our freshman reading class. And we can see that we had a drop and then slowly an increase. And these are the pandemic years, so the 2021 and the 2122. So we see that that's the course where the kids need the most support. So we see that they're slowly becoming an incline in those courses. But the freshman reading courses are pretty consistent. They're pretty much staying the same in those numbers. Our sophomore reading course is another tier-two intervention. It's typically recommended for students who take freshman reading, and they're recommended by their freshman reading teacher or, and/or their freshman English teacher. In this course, the student enrollment is optional, so students can decide whether or not they want to take this course or whether or not they have the space in their schedule to take the course. The curriculum is designed to support their continued literacy development, especially if they've had the freshman reading support classes. And it supports them across all disciplines, but specifically in civics and English. And the support, again, in this class is based on their individualized needs as determined by the STAR and not by the MAP because they're 10th graders now. So we look at their STAR data, they take the STAR assessment when they enter the course, and then again, teachers are able to kind of individualize their needs based off of the information they receive from the STAR assessment. So again, this is looking at sophomore reading enrollment trends over the last four years, so include this year. We had a drop, but then we had a sharp increase, as you can see, for the 2122 school year. And this is because, just like freshman year, we enrolled a lot of our spent kids into this course so that they can also receive this course at a gen ed level. And it's actually worked out really, really well. They received a lot of support, and our students overall. And we see that a lot of students are actually considering this course for their sophomore year. Our current freshmen are considering this course for their sophomore year because of the levels of support they receive. All right, so transitioning. I threw a couple of pictures of our new literacy lab into this presentation because I don't know if any of you had the chance to come by and see it, but it's beautiful. It's a beautiful space. It's newly renovated as of this summer. The literacy lab was 100% donor-funded, so every cent for the renovation came from donors, books, iPads, materials, resources, 100% donor-funded. So, yeah, so here's a picture of one view, another view. I'll let you take that in, and it's beauty. And another view. So it's a really awesome space. But a little bit about the literacy lab is, it is a referral-based intervention. We use data and reading assessments to determine students' needs. So students are referred, they can be referred by any person in the building, a psychologist, social worker, a teacher, anybody who determined that the student may need reading intervention. So we look at the student's data, STAR assessments, we look at classroom performance, we look at any other referrals students may have, and determine if the literacy lab is an appropriate place for them. If it's a student who just may not be doing work, but is still, is still can, can perform highly, the literacy lab may not be the right place for them, but we do help them seek the right interventions that they would need. So all of the people in the literacy lab are trained reading specialists or reading-endorsed teachers who work with students one-on-one, and sometimes we do small groups where that's appropriate, but it's typically one-on-one instruction. The literacy lab services are additive, which means that we, it's, it could be in conjunction with another tier-two or tier-three intervention they may have. It is not mandated that students attend. We do give the students the opportunity to decide if they feel that space is also right for them. The first time they get referred, we have a walkthrough with the students, we tell them about the space, we tell them about the services, and we give them the opportunity to decide if that's the appropriate space for them as well because we want them to be invested in their learning as well. So they get the opportunity to make that decision. We talk to the parents, we set up a schedule for the students, and we begin our services. So students are typically scheduled during their study halls or unscheduled times. Again, it's completely voluntary. We don't force them to be there. But we do, once they decide they want to be there, we do make sure that they hold true to their words and they continue to come. And typically, we don't have issues with that. Our students love to be there. And I just wanted to add this little nugget because something that we're very proud of, last year, three of our students who graduated last year were accepted to all of their college of choice. They all applied to multiple colleges. They were all accepted to all of their colleges. And two of the students were previously discouraged about applying. They weren't even going to apply. But after they worked with us and we encouraged them, they applied to multiple colleges and got accepted to all of their colleges, and all three are in college right now. So it works.
Very nice.
And then some of the students' feedback, one student said, "I got one-on-one support that focused on what I need to achieve." Another student said, "They chose stuff that fits you, so it's not too hard or too easy," which sounds, you know, a little like, yeah, 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 but that's really important for some students. You have to meet students where they are, and that student felt like they were supported exactly where they are. Another student said, "The people that was helping me on my reading and my work really helped me." And they emphasized the word, the second "helped." "They really helped me." Another student said, "I come here and I feel loved and supported," because that's what we do. We love on our kids. One parent said, "Thank you all so much," and she was in tears when she said this. She said, "Thank you all so much for everything you're doing. My son feels loved and respected in the literacy lab. I know it is working for him, and he really loves coming there." So those are just some of the testaments in that beautiful space. So drop by. And then these are some of our enrollment numbers. So this is from 2020, 2021, where we had, and this is just a breakdown of the grades that we had in there. So we had about eight ninth graders, 12 10th graders, 13 11th graders, and 17 12th graders, so a total of about 50 kids. And just because of staffing, we have limited staffing capacity, so we had some students on the waitlist, but we were able to fully serve 50 kids that year. And then, oh, I thought I threw the other chart in there. But for this year, we have about 53 kids, but I'm going to go back to that last chart. So this, I think this is the 2020, 21 year, sorry. So the year before, we had about 19 11th graders and maybe two 12th graders, but all of the 11th graders wanted to come back for 12th grade. So that's why this year we have 17 12th graders. They all wanted to come back. And that's like a big deal when you think about like kids who, who need extra support as a 12th grader who has the chance to go home at the end of the day, but they decide they want to come and get that extra support in the literacy lab. That says a lot. All right, our summer lift program. So our summer lift is our, it's a literacy-intensive summer program. It's a four-week, 16-day program, and we've looked at many different structures for this program over the last, over the three years that we've run it. So we use informal reading inventories, and we use these to assess our students' strengths and their need areas. And we look at their strengths before their need areas because we really want our kids to feel supported. It's the summertime, they're choosing to be there, so we want to focus on their strengths and then look at their needs. Students receive one-on-one literacy intervention in this space as well. And we support District 65 and District 202 kids in this program, so it's not just 202. And we've seen students make fantastic gains during the summer, even in the short 16-day, but it's literacy-intensive. So we're hitting them, hitting them, hitting them with literacy. It's, it's another donor-funded program. It's 100% donor-funded. So we have donors that cover their tuition, the books, materials, so I've been really fortunate to have that. And then we have families who ask at the end if we can extend the one-hour program. So we looked at that model for this summer, it's something that we're working on for the summer, where we actually plan to extend our hours for the summer of 2022. And another plan of ours is to look at some of the juniors and seniors who have gone through summer lift and even our literacy lab to employ them during the summer in summer lift, where they would be able to work with the kids from District 65 after they've had their one-on-one intervention time. It's just our way of extending the program, but also giving those kids an opportunity to build leadership skills and to motivate them, and also to hopefully give them the desire to continue in the field of education, especially for our Black and Brown students because we know that we're, you know, we're limited in the number of Black and Brown students who go to college for education. So we really want to promote that and use this as a way to do that with our kids. So this is just looking at some of the enrollment data in our summer lift program from 2018 to 2019, 2019 to 2020, and then 2020 to 21. The reds are the District 202s and the blues are the District 65s. And I know some of you are probably noticing that we had a sharp decline for 2021. And a lot of that was our kids, a lot of our kids were working. A lot of our kids who were formally with us before or that we invited to come said that they had to, you know, make some money to support families, and there were other factors that contributed to that. But also, we had a large number of District 65 kids who felt that they needed, or parents who felt their kids needed the support, and we were there to support any kid, you know, no matter what. And then our average growth during summer lift. Again, this is a look over the last three years. The first year, we had about a two-year average growth for both District 65 and 202 combined. In 19, in 20, 20, 19, 20, 20, we had a small decline, but that was also the year that we were first in the pandemic, and kids were, I mean, they were spent with like remote, been on the screen, so it was a difficult year. But then we bounced back aggressively in 2020, 2021, and we had a 2.7, a 2.6-year increase in our student learning, and that was between both districts. So that was phenomenal when you look at that, much growth in just 16 days, and it was true growth.
So Dr. Brown, again, you're pointing out that in 16 intensive days, you could see two and a half years of growth in student reading.
Yes. Yes, it is very possible. And we're hoping to see even more this year when we extend the program and implement the mentorship of our students here as well as their support. We're definitely hoping to see maybe three years of growth. All right, so we still got work to do, though. Like, we did a lot. There's a lot going on. I sprouted a couple of gray hairs over the last couple of years, but we still got a lot of work to do. So some of the efforts and supports that remain in place and that we're doing is Discover Success Through Music. That's one of our literacy and development courses. It uses music to increase students' fluency and comprehension, their leadership skills, as well as retention. And that's offered in, as an alternative to FASH for freshman students. Students Taking All Inspiring Roles to Success for Stars is offered the second year, and that's a course that enforces, again, the literacy and development. But it also really looks at students learning with compassion and confidence, and it builds their creative creativity in becoming a leader. We, we continue with our Drop Everything and Read, so our idea, where teachers are encouraged to give students flexible time during class to just read for pleasure. So it doesn't have to be something that's related to content, but definitely something that promotes the enjoyment of, of literacy and reading for fun. Another thing that we've done, which I'm really proud of, is our collaboration with NEIU. We have a reading master's or endorsement program. Like I said, most of our teachers in the literacy lab have gone through this program, and they've done, they've been able to do their clinic practicum here at ETHS, where I am the instructor, but also we're able to work with our students. So we're not bringing students from anywhere else. We're working with our students. We're working with District 65 students to help them, but we're also helping our teachers become literacy proficient as well as earn their master's or endorsement in reading, and that goes further than anything that we can spend money on. So currently, we've had 11 ETHS teachers who've completed this program. We have six who are currently enrolled, and we're looking to start a new cohort in the summer or the fall. I've gotten a ton of money from donors who are willing to support teachers through scholarships. So we have money where we can support teachers through scholarships if they're not able to completely fund the program, but we also have some caveats in there, too, some, you know, some things they got to do for me, like bake cookies. But we've also had some partnerships with Foundation 65. They've teamed with us to help promote the program as well. So we've, we've had about 19 teachers in District 65 who are enrolled and/or are completing the program. And they've also been able to do their clinic practicum here with, with me, with our, our kids as well. So District 65 and 202 kids, so that's fantastic. The last thing that's in progress is our E-Town Literacy Leader. So it's the program that I, in conjunction with our new school reading specialist, Ms. Elizabeth Bramley, are working together with to promote leadership, again, with our students here, but we're also looking to have a mentorship opportunity with our students in District 65 who are striving scholars. So in this program, students would mentor, as well as tutor, students in District 65 for an hour in literacy-related activities, and we're hoping that with that, we can promote the non-need for a literacy lab, right? In the next six years, as Dr. Beavis has pointed out, will be, still be in need when they come to the high school, so.
Any questions?
I do have a question, and we talked about this, but I want to raise it. So ready? It's really canned, okay?
You're supposed to answer the questions. That's how this works.
This is a question I think is on everyone's mind when we talk about literacy data. Dr. Brown, do you notice that students are entering ETHS with lower reading levels than before?
Well, I would say, Dr. Beavis, that it all boils down to this, that students who are reading at grade level historically continue to do so, right? But we have observed that there's a widening gaps for students who strive to read, right? And this follows all the national trends. But what we plan to do, what I plan to do under my leadership and with my team, is to help close those gaps in every way that we can. We've searched every way that we can possible to help close those gaps with our students here and with our students at District 65.
Thank you. Now everybody else can ask questions.
Wait a minute, I think, I think I have a question. Dr. Brown, who raised that money for the Lit Lab?
I, I had a fair hand in that. But I will also say that with our foundation and Joanne Burchi, we, we work together to raise that money, and I'm, I'm hoping that we can get many more donors who are supporting literacy in, in the ethnic community. Thanks.
Yeah. So I haven't been there in a while. Is it still located in the same space?
It is located in the same space. We expanded to the second room.
Okay, so you must have like torn a wall down or something.
It's bigger and better.
Because, yeah, those pictures, I'm thinking, I remember what it looked like when I was there, and how did it get like all that space?
That's the magic that happens at ETHS over those 10 weeks in the summer.
Yeah?
It's, it is, we, it is in the full classroom that used to be next door to the space.
Yeah, we tore down that wall in the middle and
Yeah. And how many students can you get in there? You, you mentioned something when you were talking about staffing and a waitlist.
Yeah.
I was, I was like, and, and these incredible numbers that you get, and then we, it sounds like we're seeing more and more students who will benefit from this program. So I don't, you know, and I know my colleagues join me, we don't want to see kids turned away because we can't staff it.
Right. At our current capacity, we can serve about 60 kids. But we definitely see that there's a need for much more.
Do you have students like that you can't get to because?
Yeah, like, one example is, let's say, fourth block, right? We may have two people who are working in the lab in that period, but we may have four kids who need support. But we can only support two because those students may have very different needs. But we can't do small groups because they're very, their needs are very different. So we really try our best to like, because we have the blocks now, to split the time, so 45 minutes, 45. We try to get as many kids in as we can.
Right.
But at the same time, we don't want to overwhelm the staff because that's important, too. We want to make sure that they're sharp and on point, so. But yeah, that's definitely an issue.
So not to be outdone by Dr. Beavis, I have a question. You mentioned, first of all, that you're helping some people do like their practicums and that kind of thing. Off the top of your head, an estimate, how many of our teachers are already certified as reading specialists? And about how many more do you feel we have in the pipeline? This can be an estimate.
I know there's a couple in different departments that I don't know of, but I know we probably have close to 25 who are, who are certified or reading specialist. know we probably have close to 25 who are, who are certified or reading specialist. And we can, oh, gosh, we, how many staff do we have? We, we are all reading teachers. So every single person in this building can be certified in reading. That's my hope, that's my vision.
The reason I wanted to lift that up is because that is not common in high schools.
Very true.
But this high school has made a, a real commitment to the fact that reading is the gateway to all learning. You have the chairperson of the math department here, and I think Mr. Leibforth would even tell you how important reading skills are in mathematics. And so one of the things that I think is such a tribute to Kiwanah, but, but to this whole school, is that we recognized a number of years ago that because reading is the gateway to all learning, we cannot sit by and accept the fact that students are reading at, at whatever level it may be, and that's just the way it is once they get to the high school.
Sure.
And in fact, our commitment is, we want to support that reading and, you know, grow that reading level so that they are even more equipped for not only this school, but for life. And it's a very important philosophy of ETHS.
Thank you. Thank you for lifting that up. Other questions? Pat?
Mira, did you want to go? You had your light on before.
No, thanks.
Okay.
Well, so, just fabulous, and thank you. And I love your, I love the spirit behind and the commitment and the passion behind what you're talking about, because, as Eric just said, this is the cornerstone. And just the way you're taking it on, it's just, thank you. I mean, that is amazing. And I, I, I'd love some of the, the pieces, like, that you have students who have themselves been struggling, helping other kids. That is so important. That is, I mean, and I don't, you know, there's so much research that says kids need, they need confidence, they need to be valued. And to do that is just fabulous, especially while they're still in the program. I mean, that is just amazing. So you get my vote for whatever you want to do. I did want to ask about, because of the insanity of the pandemic and the remote learning. So we had a freshman class come in to completely remote. And you've got all these wonderful supports, but they all had to be online, or maybe you couldn't even do all of them. How, what is kind of, how is that looking? I mean, are you, I know we now offer reading for sophomores, which is great, but like, did you, what did you have to do in the moment with them on the remote? And then now they're back in this building, what does that look like?
I think prime, the first thing that we wanted to do with our kids, especially in our, in our reading intervention courses, it wasn't as hard with the literacy lab, because, again, that's voluntary, like, you have the option to, to be there. But we, for all of the teachers in the, in the reading program, what we really wanted to enforce was care. We, we tried to consider the student social, emotional first, and then the academic secondary, especially during the remote setting and pandemic, and it's new to everybody, and we're freaking out and they're freaking out. So, you know, we really just wanted to exercise some compassion and care. I mean, I think that that created a lot of buy-in for students to really want to just invest in their own learning, because they knew that we cared, not just about them academically, but about them emotionally. So I think that was one of the, just the strengths of, of what we tried to do remotely. And it's something that we, we still try to enforce in person as well. Like, we definitely want kids to know that we care. And that's most important.
That's great. And did you need to kind of, tweak isn't probably the right word, but do some new things or different things when you got them back? Because maybe they didn't get the same robust support, not because of anything you did, but because they were online versus in person? Like, did things change when you got them in person?
Yeah, there's definitely some gaps that we saw, especially with our freshmen who became sophomores. And that's part of the power of the STAR assessment. Like, we really wanted to see where students were academically and in what areas they, they were showing gaps. And to be able to individualize that instruction for them and help them to create their own goals, so that not only would we have that information, like, this is where you are academically, but also, what goals do you have for yourself? What are you seeing for yourself? And just being able to put those things together. We had more buy-in from students, but we also had students showing more gains in classes because they were able to set their own goals, but also identify where they were themselves, personally, academically, and have the teachers there as support.
That's great. Well, thank you. You're doing a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Liz?
Hi, thanks for your presentation tonight. I just have a couple of technical questions. I was wondering, what's the name of the curriculum that's used in the reading classes?
So because it is very student kind of directed, there is no rote curriculum. Like, we don't use, like, a set curriculum. But we do look at, again, our individualized student needs. So based off of that, our teachers are able to create curriculum that works for their kids in, in the right now, right? Like, we're looking at where students are, and we're, we're teaching them based off of what their individual needs are, as well as where they are. We're teaching kids where they're, where they're at, right? So that where we're able to really, and really get to see the gains, right? Where the strengths are, where the needs are.
And is that the case in, like, the literacy lab and, and all the other different interventions?
Well, the literacy lab, too, that, we start off with an informal reading inventory. So all students are multiple places. It really depends on where they, where they show up on the, the inventory, because it looks at their reading level, it looks at their comprehension level, their vocabulary level, how they're answering inferential questions, how they answer, you know, it just looks at everything. So we're able to really target exactly where kids are and what their area needs, their needs of, of growth are. And our instructors, interventions are able to work with the students directly in those areas.
Yeah, that's great. And then I was wondering, do we have any Wilson trained reading specialists?
We have two. So, yeah, and then a couple of our reading teachers have done the first or the introductory courses on Wilson, so they have some background. But we haven't had a lot of teachers who've gone through the entire program. But we do have a couple who've gone through it.
Okay. And then I was just curious, how are students referred to, referred to the summer lift program?
So we typically kind of solicit our, our older kids, because they run away from us sometimes in the summer. So we kind of chase them and, and let them know that we have the support. But for our district 65 students, we've, we've often had to do a lot of outreach, make a lot of phone calls. But this year, Dr. Beasley has, she's put together a whole different template. So now they can actually register online, and then they send the information to us for the students who want the support.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for that beautiful presentation. That was really stunning and inspiring. And I can really feel how much you're working with students on a one-on-one basis and, you know, making sure you're tracking them and meeting them where they are, as you said. I'm curious about, you know, I can imagine how much work that requires to, to try to reach every student. And I, I know it must be terribly difficult when, I mean, and I appreciate the respect that you're giving to the students about making sure that it's voluntary. And of course, we know that there are more students than you're able to serve that have needs. How are you, and what, what, what opportunities are there? What solutions do you have? What ideas or, or needs do you feel still need to be met in terms of reaching those students who, for whatever reason, either resource-wise, you're not able to get to them, or in terms of the voluntary aspect, are not opting in? How are you able to reach those students? Or how, how can we do more to reach those students? And, and I guess maybe the other question is, at the, at the center of that is, what is the percentage of students, would you say, that we're reaching versus not able to serve for whatever reason?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to answer your questions in reverse that you asked. So I, I think that, I cannot put a number on that. I think that there are far more students that need the support than are actually receiving it. And I think that sometimes we, we look at students who are in AP classes and say, oh, they don't need the support. But a lot of those students still do. So that's why I say those numbers are higher than what we may just want to guess. And I just, I can put a number on that. But to answer your, your first question, I'm kind of a think outside the box kind of gal, right? Like, I like to think of all the possibilities that we can actually have for students. Like, what can we do to support students when there seems to be no other way, right? Like, can, how can we, can we pay for students to do this if they can't afford the, if they don't have the resources to pay for it? Can we, and Mary knows, I'm always bothering her about money. Like, what can we do? Can we look at their schedules and, and do this? Can we split this? Can I pull them from this class for some time and, and give them the support that they need to be successful? Because they're not being successful in this class, because they're missing the skills that they need to be successful. So how can we support them? So I'm always thinking of ways to, like, support kids that's outside of the box of the norm, right? Like, how can we help these kids when they're not being successful in the spaces that they are? And that's really like my, my thing. Like, I really want to be able to support kids. I really want them to be successful. If we know, if we, if teachers know they're not being successful, how, what can we do to help support them? And then secondary to that is, how can we train teachers to help them be a resource for students? Like, if they don't know the strategies and the skills to help the kids in the spaces that they are, what can we do to help support those teachers as well? So that's why I'm thankful to be able to have donors to give us scholarship money, because we assume that, yeah, we make a wonderful salary here, but we can't all afford to go to college and get another degree. We have kids in, in college and et cetera. So how can we support our teachers in a way that they can actually support our kids in those spaces where we know they're not being successful? And that's really how I look at supporting all the kids.
Thank you.
You know, that's what I was going to say before, thanks. Because I was thinking about how the literacy lab is really an innovation lab. You know, there's so much coming out of that that could be paid forward to teachers in those core instructional spaces. And so I was wondering if the information around student achievement or where they are gets siloed? Or how could we help to desilo it? And, you know, is there, I should know this, and I'm, I'm a little embarrassed, but I don't know if there's a, you know, like, a computer data processing system that teachers have access to? Or does the data only live with certain people in our schools? And so how do we empower more of our teachers to do the work in those spaces outside of a lab, which is great, but only 53 kids?
And I think part of that, too, as I said before, is just kind of like in making sure that our student, our teachers have the resources that they need to be trained. And one of the other services that we offer in the literacy lab, we're like a one-stop-shop. Come get food, come get this. But one of the services that we offer, too, is professional development. So if teachers wanted to know more about how to support kids and how to help them read a science text, like, they can come to the Lit Lab and actually get PD in that. We have wonderful staff in there who are very knowledgeable about pretty much everything, right? We even have a woman in there who was an attorney. Like, we got it all. So just stop in there, right? But we, we can support teachers in a lot of different ways. But that's also some of the services that we can provide for them there. And we collaborate with a lot of teachers, and we help them plan lessons and, you know, just give them strategies that they need to incorporate some of the things in their own classes. But we also just really try to support them in being able to get the resources that they need, like, through the NEIU program or through other resources, so that they can give that back to the students in their own classes in real time.
Other questions? The work you're doing is just amazing. So thank you so much for supporting the students and, and continuing to connect them and reaching out to district 65 students, because we know that for us, when we receive those, those students, wherever they are, we don't have a lot of time to work with them. So just, I'm just so deeply appreciated, appreciative of you and your staff. And that PD piece that you were just talking about is also amazing. I hope, I hope teachers are taking advantage of that, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
I'm going to stay right here, because I think I'm next.
You stay right there, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Looks like you have a few people joining you.
Yeah. Well, I see Dale and Tina and Jody and, who else? Josh? Yeah, Pete won't be alone up there. And he'll introduce.
Our, our, our staff in just a minute.
Just while we have a pause a minute, just a reminder to everybody in attendance, be sure that you're wearing your mask over your nose and your mouth at all times. We are very particular about that here at ETHS.
All right, over the nose. Everybody on the panel? Good, good. All right.
When you teach all day wearing a mask, you get a lot of practice, right?
I'm, I'm thrilled to be here tonight. We have a, quite a, quite a amazing team here. We have Dale Leibforth, Tina Lula, Josh Brown, and Jody Elliott Schreimer. So thank you all. I'm going to jump in, and I'm going to, Dale's going to do a little, get up and do a little stuff with the computer in a minute when I prove a point. But I think it's a good time to just jump right in. So this, this, we're aligned to district goal one, which is our equitable and excellent education here at ETHS. Again, we have national recognition for our advanced placement work that continues. Let me give you some context on tonight's presentation and why I think, you know, I don't want to call it a crisis in the making, but I want to come very close to calling it a crisis in the making. What we've seen is a perfect storm of the COVID pandemic. We've seen a struggle with continuity over the school year, not just here, but in nationally. We see shifting assessment landscape. For example, the SAT is going to go to an all-online version. We've seen the AP exams given online. We've seen the AP exams given in person. We've seen a combination. We've seen the college board require world language students to come to school to test. So we've seen a variety of shifting assessment landscapes for kids. Last year, during the pandemic, at the height of the pandemic, the college board decided that they would require a full scope and sequence for all students enrolled in AP courses, that they would assess the full scope and sequence. And because, quote unquote, colleges expected it, which I found very interesting, because colleges were struggling to make adaptations to their instruction and their curriculum during that time. But high school teachers were not afforded that, nor were students. And to top it off, the college board offered a full refund for testing for the last two years, right up until the last minute. So you literally, the morning of the exam, could have decided not to take the exam and received a full refund. Those are all the messages that are out there now. That is not the case this year. There are no refunds. It is a full scope and sequence. My hope is that we won't have a shifting, we will have a continuity of instruction without, you know, major breaks and disruptions. We won't be remote for long periods of time. So far, so good. We do have a shifting assessment landscape, but we're, we're dealing with that as best we can. And we anticipate having full in-person AP exams this year that will, will assess the full scope and sequence. So let me just go through just briefly some research findings that I feel need to be underscored now more than ever. And this is from AP, A Critical Examination of the Advanced Placement Program, from Harvard University Press. They put out this book a few years ago, and here's their message to parents. Those students who enroll in AP courses should take the exam and pass it. That's their finding. Not to just enroll, but to actually enroll in the course, study for the exam, take the exam, and pass it. I think it's a good message for parents, but I think it's a very important message in today's shifting climate. AP courses in which few students take or pass the exam are not effective, and resources, both material and personnel, should be considered for reallocation to improve lower-level courses. So what they're saying is sequentially, if you're not seeing a lot of students enrolling in AP classes or taking those AP exams, you need to shift your funding to build the base, right? So if you don't see a lot of So if you don't see a lot of students in a, in a particular AP course, look to the courses that feed that course, invest in those courses, and, and really back burner those, those specific AP courses. Next. Why the benefits of taking exam? This is a big slide. I'm only gonna read the highlighted part. This came from the National, the Journal of Labor and Economics from the University of Chicago. For students, AP exams can reduce the total cost associated with post-secondary education. Assuming that a typical student completes 30 credit hours per year, savings from earning credit on one AP exam has the potential to save the student estimated $914 in cost for one AP test. That is 10 times larger than the actual cost of an AP exam, which is $90, thereabouts. And it's cheaper if you qualify for free reduced lunch, much, much cheaper. And here's the other thing. They found that students for each AP credit they earn, each score of three or higher, they increase the probability of completing their bachelor's degree on time in four years. And there's a ton, and I'm looking at parents out there, and there's a ton of financial incentive to completing a degree in four years. Goes, a lot, we're hitting reset here, okay? This is the pand- we're hitting reset on all the expectations. It's super important that we do this. Bear with me. Public universities and community colleges in Illinois are required, this slide is up here every year, but I think it's super important this year, to award college course credit for AP scores of three plus. Mr. Leibforth is gonna pull up the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign, and he's just going to scroll down now. Just go slow. There you go. If you score a three, four, five, here's the course credit. If you get art history, three, four, five, here's the corresponding course credit. Keep going. Oh, wait, stop at biology. That's a very interesting one. Scores of three or four, you get integrated biology for three hours of credit. Super important. This is U of, this is U of I. This is the flagship state school in Illinois. AB Calc, it's math. They'll let you scroll through that. There's a lot, they break it down. But if you keep going, what you're gonna see here is that there is a new, there's a monetary value attached to each of these courses scoring a three or higher. Again, very important. And this is U of I, and this is required by law of the state universities and colleges in Illinois. State, you know, northern, southern, northeastern, et cetera. Illinois State, they're all here. You're gonna, you could scroll for the next 20 minutes, Dale, and we won't run out of scroll. But you can stop now and go back to the PowerPoint. I think the point was made. Thank you. So here, last year we saw, we saw a overall, you know, this is just our, this is our required, where are we since 2007? Well, we're not as good as we were. We still see a 20% increase in scores of three, but we're nowhere near where we were. Our access is up since that date time. Our scores are up, but that's not really the story tonight. We did exceed the national in 14 of 26 subjects taste, tested, the percentage of students tested getting a three or higher. You know, normally we exceed in just about every course, so I just want to put that in context. We were hit hard by the, by the pandemic. Now here's the narrowing. I want to really make a, a case here of the narrowing. Okay, so you have all these students, and this are only the students in, we take all the students in 11th and 12th grade, and then we say, how, what percentage of those kids took one or more AP exam? We're not talking about all of them that took an AP class. Many of them take an AP class. And then it narrows. You know, so for example, let's say we had, I don't know, 1,221 students take AP classes. And then it narrows. Because not every kid who takes the exam, at least last year, right, took the test. And with good reason last year, right? Full refund. They tested everything. The instruction was completely disrupted. But we see a narrowing of the funnel. All the kids at the school, all the kids that choose to take AP courses, students who take the actual exam, students who get three or higher. We see this narrowing. In a typical year, it narrows something like this. Right? This, last year it went, right? That's a, that's a pronounced difference. You like my mathematical?
That's a good visual.
Was it a good visual?
Can you do it again?
No, no. I'll save it for later. Again, we saw 26% of all 11th and 12th graders earned a three plus on an AP exam. And again, disaggregated by race. You see the racial predictability here. And you see, you know, maybe this is a pro- it was really, last year, it's really unclear. And if you look nationally, the College Board has not released national disaggregated data. But they do have data that is very troubling. You see some courses, the act, the, the students who took the exam down 25% nationally, over 20% decline in the numbers of three or higher in some courses. In some instances, the number of students earning those credits. So you're reducing all of those opportunities in the post-secondary world, right? That we were talking about earlier. We have to disrupt this. We have to really get, bring, bring it back to the basics. Bring it back to, you take the course, you take the exam, that's the expectation. Measuring change. So we use this percent change. I always show this thing, and I always usually feel good about it. We say, look, relative to the population, we went up, we went down. We always go up, right? We're great. Not this time. And this is what happens. We had 57% fewer students, black African-American students taking AP exams, and 30% fewer earning score of three or higher. And I'm comparing this to 2019. We don't include the 2020. That was a weird, that was all online. It was three quarters of the material that was tested. We, our kids did great because really what the College Board said is, oh, everybody stopped on March 13th. We're gonna stop our curriculum on that day. That's really what happened nationally. And they just tested on what was taught up until that point. So what we're going back and looking at as our comparison point, a normal instructional year. We see our Hispanic Latino students down 24% in terms of students taking the exam, and our AP scores in that subgroup down 42%, 42.5%. For AP students, for white students, we see a 15% decline in those taking the exam, and we see a 21% decrease in scores of three or higher. We have our access data here. Again, though, I just want to be clear that we understand, when we say total AP students, we really mean total number of students taking AP exams. We're really starting with the total number of students. Because there was, there was a lot of students, remember, a lot of students take AP class? And then last year, it narrowed, and then it narrowed again. So you see that reflected here. You see our African-American students here in terms of their scores of three or higher, the percent of three or higher.
But...
Go ahead.
Isn't within the, within the group, though, within the percentage of students taking the AP exam, the percentage of three or, three or higher is going up? So year to year, the percentage is going down, obviously, across those categories. But within that group, within 2021, that, you know, you're at 50% of the students that are getting three or higher as opposed to, right?
So what we're actually seeing, if you go back, is we're seeing that, for the most part, we see a decline in the number of students taking the test. And then we see a strange piece. So here we see 71% back in 2018, 19, which was a normal school year, down to 66% last year. If you just leave it at, if you just looked at just the raw percentages on that, you'd say, okay, that's a decline. It's not a precipitous decline, but it's a decline. Right? But if you add to that, that we've narrowed that funnel and we don't have 972 kids taking it, you gotta ask yourself, who's still sitting for the exam? What privileges, and we could talk about the privilege inherent in taking those exams. Last year in particular, it might be a proxy for something else, not necessarily academic achievement on those exams.
But with the black and African-American students, I understand your point. But the percentage of students in that category who are... Okay, I guess I read it wrong.
Yeah, you see, it's 33%.
I see, I see. Okay, okay. I'm sorry, I read that.
No, you got it.
I read that chart wrong.
Yeah, it went up last year, but to 53%. And this year it went down. But again, it's a function of all those things. We don't really know what is, we kind of can hypothesize what's driving, what was driving that, as I said earlier. And there's our white kids are back. So, and here's our, we used to have this big list of courses with 100-plus students earning a three or higher. And now it's three courses. College Board continues to provide and incentivize, even last year incentivized students taking multiple AP exams. So you still see that we had 108 AP scholars, and AP scholars with honors, and all these are individual honors that they give kids for taking and passing multiple AP exams. This is my final slide. This is the NIRA slide, partnered with NIRA several years ago. Look, that's the Northwestern Evanston Educators Research Alliance. They looked at Evanston kids. How did Evanston kids do in college based on how many AP exams they took? How many semesters, contiguous semesters did they persist? And what you'll see is, it makes a difference to take three or four. And then it levels off over your entire time in high school. So kids who take three or four have about an 80% chance of persisting to a fifth contiguous year, semester rather, of college, which again is borne out by the national data, right? So that's important. Another reason to take the exam. I'm gonna turn it over to these folks. They're gonna tell us all the great things we're gonna do to get back on track. No, no pressure.
Thanks, Pete. I, I think the summary there on the reset is that students who take an AP class this year, there's 1,272 students, unique students who are taking an AP course this year. We expect every student who takes an AP class to take the AP exam. So we're resetting that this year. That could help with parts of the data. Obviously, the data has a lot of explanation that we could kind of grasp at behind it. But we do know that our teachers worked incredibly hard through a variety of different setups. Our students worked hard throughout the year and did the best we can. Obviously, the, the data is disappointing, but we know that a lot goes into that during the pandemic that we had. So we are looking to reset at this point, as we always have. Every student who takes an AP class, we do expect them to take the AP exam at the, at the end of the course, and we expect them to do well. Team ASEP has helped with that since 2011. Team ASEP has done their best to work for access and success for all students. We have a mission that all students have access to AP courses, and that we create a community that supports positive and successful experiences in those courses. And we've developed through Student Voice, a variety of supports that help students in the year preceding their AP class and the year after their AP class. I'm happy to highlight any of those. We will highlight a few in the report tonight. But there are a few things that are newer that we thought we would highlight because sometimes we just go over the same events that we've had. But the idea is, if you think about taking an AP class, we really want you to start freshman year, sophomore year, as you're in those classes, earning honors credit. We want you to have that as a goal in the future. And then the year before your AP class, so that could be sophomore year, it could be junior year, we have a series of support set up to help you be successful. And then once you get into those classes, we have a series of supports to help you be successful all the way up to and through the exam, which again, we do expect all the students to take and be successful at, at the end of, of the class. And, and so hopefully this year is a good reset for us. And I will turn it over to the team to highlight some of the newer initiatives that we have.
Awesome. I need someone to go to the next slide for me. Awesome, thanks. So I just am gonna highlight some of the events that were on the chart we saw on the previous slide. So these are events that we've had in place for several years, but as things needed to be changed or adapted, we tried to do that. And then when we came back to school in person, we've really been trying to evaluate, you know, were there events that, that worked better when they were virtual and do we keep them virtual? Were we reaching more students? Were we reaching more families that way? So you can see that our AP summer camp this year, despite having the opportunity to do it in person, we opted to do it virtually because we found that we get higher attendance from our students as well as from teachers who are available to offer a summer camp for their course because they can do it from anywhere. So, you know, it used to be that the Team ASEP email was like flooded with, my student is at summer camp, they're gonna miss this event. Or, you know, we're traveling, so we're gonna miss this. And that just became a non-issue now. So people were logging in from wherever and were able to access the summer camp. So we opted to keep it virtual and, like I said, saw some higher attendance, meaning that we were reaching more students, which was awesome. Similarly, we kept our, our Fall Academy, which is an event that we do early in the year. We changed the format of that instead of to be specific to courses, to be a general support event for students about how can you handle the stress of being in an AP class? How can you manage your time better? What does it feel like to be a student of color in an AP course and so forth? So we tried to address things a little bit more generally in terms of like belonging and feeling good in your AP course rather than academically of like, here's some content we can deliver to you on a Saturday. That was happening with our Fall Academy. Our Pathways to EP Forum, again, we opted to do it virtual. And we found, based on the numbers, that we're reaching more families. So I think we, someone can correct me if I'm wrong. We definitely had over 100 people tuned in on, on a screen, meaning 100 families likely, as opposed to maybe just 100 people in the auditorium. So we felt like we reached more families by doing it virtually. What I thought was really unique about this year's AP Forum is just kind of organically, our panel brought a really honest and uplifting conversation surrounding the struggles and the triumphs of being an AP student. And I thought that was very unique for this year. Dr. Babus facilitated that, and, and it was really a refreshing conversation. And refreshing to have the opportunity for so many families to hear that. Our AP Fair is one that we opted to reinstate as an in-person event. We held that in our hub, and it was actually like a sold-out event. We had as many classes attend as were possible to fit in the hub, given current protocols. And so we had over 45 classes attend. And those were majority freshman and sophomore classes. So coming back to that access piece, Josh gives a really great speech at the beginning that I find very inspiring about how all students there can feel like they have access to these AP courses and how that decision is something that they can take on for themselves. And so that event was, was really successful in just the number of freshmen and sophomore students we were able to reach in one day to remind them that we have these AP courses across all different subject areas, and that those courses are available to them. Coming up, we have AP Exam Prep and AP Spring Training. Exam Prep, you know, focuses on that success piece, like, has been mentioned several times today. We, we want our students to take the AP exam, so we want them to be successful on that exam. And so AP Exam Prep is an opportunity for every AP teacher to offer a review session, a practice exam, whatever is required to help the students prepare and be successful on their AP exam. And then Spring Training is an event where we start to look already into the following school year, where we say, hey, you, you decided you were gonna take an AP class next year. How can we help prepare you now? That's what we look at, at, at Spring Training. And then the last thing is a foundational piece of our Team ASEP program is our monthly lunch meetings where we have students who are enrolled in AP courses or thinking about enrolling in an AP course. So we have students from freshman through senior year. And we talk about a variety of issues pertaining to the experience of being an AP student. And we really do try to focus those conversations around race and equity in the AP classroom. This year we've had like an unprecedented amount of attendance. So we're getting between 120 and 150 students per month at our meetings, which is really exciting. And we're having some pretty fruitful conversations about that. And, you know, we're excited just to see that high of an attendance this year. So I think that's where I'll pause and then toss it over to Josh to kind of continue on some of the really unique things that we've started this year.
Thanks. I think there's... So, you know, some of the things that we've been recalibrating over the course of this year, I just wanted to speak to, Tina brought up several of them. I just wanna emphasize some other stuff about them. You know, the general shift back to in-person is an ongoing contextual decision-making process about what we're gonna do with each event and what that's gonna mean, what we can safely do and what we can meaningfully do. So the lunch meetings, like, like she had just said, we, huge turnout, really good, I felt like really fruitful conversations in small and large group contexts. And really continue to focus those on those equity topics and student experience topics and social and emotional aspects of being in AP classes. And the ones we have been able to host, we've been successful. We have, yeah, we've kind of hit the brakes for a couple of them after, during Omicron. So some other stuff we're doing, research. So a couple of years ago, we were here, when we were here in person, we had a really fruitful discussion. I remember a whole bunch of questions and discussion that we had. And one of the- a whole bunch of questions and discussion that we had. And one of the things that the board raised was the the idea of making sure that we hear from the students that are not being served, like the students that aren't taking AP classes or the students who don't come to our events and find out, not so much to like try to pressure them into doing that, but what we could learn from their experiences. So we are, we're arranging to do a sequence of, to cluster of interviews with senior students of color who have not enrolled in AP classes to find out what their experiences are and how that might bear on the work that we're doing. We're also continuing to collaborate with other clubs and activities, Educational Foundation, Peer Tutoring, SOAR. And Jody's going to talk about the new initiative, the Black Affinity Space. And then I also wanted to especially emphasize, we've really tried to re-envision and expand what it means for students to be leaders in this process. Actually, next Monday, we're doing a little in-school field trip that's going to be focused on really encouraging our student leaders who are called Advisory Board Captains to focus on organizing, to focus on how to develop those connections and networks among students to, you know, build power and transform the systems in which they exist, how they can do that from the perspective of racial equity as a goal and and continue to see themselves as leaders and not just sort of like members of classes, but but, yeah, leaders within those. So we had them, you know, come up with some ideas. What would you like to do as leaders? What kinds of things would you like to develop? And the three big categories that I haven't, three categories that we're definitely working on, feedback system, that students expressed an interest in finding a way to collect feedback from students in AP classes in an ongoing basis, you know, sharing their experiences so that feedback can be sent somewhere, not, you know, not only, just, just, just not the random conversations that we have, but an ongoing process where students can make sure that they're heard. To formalize connections with teachers between those student leaders and teachers of AP classes, they're making plans to to visit department meetings, panels that teachers can attend, and ongoing dialogue in those connections that they can have to kind of check in with teachers and see what they need and to let sure the teachers know what students feel they need. And similarly with counselors, to formalize those connections and develop some, you know, the counseling process is something that we spend some time helping students learn how to navigate and advocate for themselves within. And so the students want to build some more power around that. So those are, I think those are the main things I was going to talk about.
Good evening. I am really excited to talk to you tonight about the Black Affinity Space that we've created within Team ASAP. So this initiative really grew out of a desire to provide students with a place to really connect and empower and affirm the Black experience and that unique experience in AP classes. And so the goal is to really help students to feel like they have a sense of belonging in those classes and that they feel supported while they're there, both academically and social, socially, emotionally. One of the three goals is really to also focus on helping students to learn how to advocate for themselves, to build their own self-efficacy. We know that research tells us that when students feel confident in themselves in order to be successful, then they do perform better in AP classes. And so we have discussions around what does that look like in class and how can you advocate for yourself? We also discuss the idea of Black scholarliness and normalizing that idea for students. Sometimes it can be very isolating in AP classes, especially in certain content areas where students might be the only person of color or only Black person in that class. And they could leave feeling and questioning whether or not they belong in that space. And so we bring in outside resources and talk about the history and legacy of Black scholarliness and allow students to share their own experiences amongst themselves and have a therapeutic experience in talking about and unpacking what that's like for them. And lastly, we use it as a space to also share academic resources. So we provide students with a safe space to talk about their academic needs, any questions that they may have that could help them to be more successful in class and allow them to share their experiences in terms of what has worked for them to be successful. And they can ask me as the the group leader in other ways of which they can utilize what we have here at ETHS to help them to be more successful in the class.
Thanks, Jody, and thank you, team. Obviously, a lot of hard work from the team in terms of a lot of these initiatives, many new ones, and just the shifting, you know, you know, whether it's remote or in-person, the many shifts we've had over the last several years, it's been a lot. So I appreciate the work of the team. We kept saying earlier, we want to reset, reset, reset. We know that students, there's not like a reset button, you know? I wish there was. But we know that the students need support. We've heard from the students that they need support. So the work of the team is to really to give them what they need. That's always what Team ASAP has been about, since it was nine kids eating lunch together in the College and Career Center to now. It's always been about listening to the students, hearing what they need, and then trying to provide that for them to help them gain access to AP classes, but also to support their success. So I think the reset button is coming with a lot of the work that was discussed tonight. And we hope, looking forward, that we can continue on the path of success that we've seen over our many years working on with our students. I think the next slide says questions, so.
Yep.
So I have a, no, I don't have a question. Other than that, you know, what about this team? I'm really proud of them and I'm, it's really a pleasure to work with them.
Excellent team. Excellent team. Thank you.
Oh, and I was going to say, the AP Forum, 371 views. Just looked it up. So if you haven't seen it, I encourage you to watch. It's a frank discussion about, from students talking through AP courses and struggles and their successes and their perseverance. And it's, it's, it ends up being a racial equity conversation. It's very powerful. I recommend it to everyone to check it out. I will send a link.
Yeah, just send the link to the board. That'd be great. Thank you. That's exciting. I know this is, this Team ASAP has really been the kind of like the core, the foundation in encouraging students to take AP and sustaining them in AP classes. And, you know, it's part of our equity work that we have really taken on. So I really have to say, I appreciate the, how candid you were at the beginning, talking about the dip in the numbers and, and just, we know what kind, we know what we've been faced with over the last couple of years. And, and then how to reset and bring it back and and really kind of rebuild from, from where we were, where we were the last couple of years. I'm particularly excited about the Black Affinity Group. That sounds like it's, it's really good. Is that, is that's been, I don't know, did you, you said 100 and, did you, did you give numbers for that?
I didn't give any numbers, no. So we've met twice since the beginning of the school year. We have a cadence where Team ASAP will meet as a large group, and then we meet afterward, and we take whatever themes they've discussed at the large group meetings. And then we really isolate race in terms of those conversations and then extend it to whatever experiences they're having. And so for the last two times that we met, we've had about 20 students.
Okay.
And then we paused because of COVID.
Yes.
And so once we start back with our regular cadence, again, as a large group, we'll meet again as a small group.
Yes. It's still, it's still an inconsistent year. So I, I totally understand what you're saying. So, board, other questions? Mira?
Do you want to go, Monique?
Um, I'll wait. Go ahead.
Okay. So, I'm going to sound not so cool. I worry a little bit about the push for the exams and the scores, right? I'm trying to square or kind of understand if we're really thinking about more students taking AP courses, then I would want to be really okay with seeing ones and twos because I want kids, more kids to take the classes and to not worry. I'm not arguing we should lower the bar. But I know that while you're arguing a financial benefit, and I hear that, I would say the greater benefit is the exposure to the flexible thinking and the amazing, right, opportunities to sit in those spaces with their classmates. And we were kind of just talking about this earlier, without the pressure of, and what I would argue is a barrier to taking the course, if there's this expectation that you're really not going to meet or cut the mustard if you don't get a three, four, or five. So that's something. And then the other piece, so please, I can see Pete, you want to address that. And then, you know, it's hard to hear this, it's good and all kids need support. And I'm thinking about the Literacy Lab and, you know, so few kids who get help and then all the amazing things we're doing for our AP students. And they're just, it seemed like a great inequity there. And so I'm just trying to process that because I see these as all interventions as well, right? Like, and it's important to support all of our kids, but seemed to be something that didn't really rest with me there. I'll stop there. So those are two thoughts.
So, yeah, thank you for mentioning that. You know, I would totally settle for all 1,700 kids taking the exam this year. And, you know, the push to a three is important, but really getting a two is equally as important because we know from the research done by Canning and Dodd over the years that, you know, just sitting for the exam, the act of sitting for the exam. And if you think about it, a student sits for exam because they A, feel comfortable and confident, right? So that comfort, that culture that you build in the classroom has an intent when it's an AP course, right? It's, it's, it's to build that camaraderie toward a common goal. So sitting for that exam, trying your best, getting a one, two, or three, or four, whatever, is great. But I think it's absolutely critical that we encourage students to sit for the exam. I'll start with sitting for the exam, especially coming off of what we've had. But if we go back historically in terms of Team ASAP, we started with a one, two, or three, a one, two, or three, a one, two, or three. And a few, several years ago, we required, this goes back way back, we absolutely required students to take the test and would go back and change their transcripts to honors and remove the AP designation if they did not take the test. That's unfair, right? In a way, you know, it's very draconian to do that. So about six, seven years ago, we stopped doing that. We said, you know, a college transcript, right? A transcript is a record of the courses you've taken and completed. So if you've taken an AP class, you've taken an AP course. So there's value in that as well. So I just want to honor that and make sure that we're clear. So no, I'll, one, twos, and threes, totally, great, wonderful, let's do it. The other thing, you know, we're not funded by donors and, except Mary's pizza donorship. We serve, we are one of the lunch places, you know, where kids can get lunch. So the big thing we do is we have the lunches. I think that's probably the bedrock of the program. Bill's camaraderie, you feed kids. You have really great discussions. And almost every discussion we have is, in the large group, is facilitated through a racial equity lens. So that's critically important, too. But, you know, this literally started with kids who didn't understand what the AP designation was on a transcript. That's where we were like, like over 12 years ago. It was a kid finding a piece of paper in the cafeteria and saying, what does the AP stand for? And another kid saying, oh, that's Advanced Placement. And the kid had no idea. And this is a straight A student of college, student of color, straight A student, had no idea. Went to the counselor and said, I want to take this kind of course. What is this? So that's where we started, like 12, how many years ago?
2011.
2011. So many years ago. So that, that's where we started with the work. So it's grown and it's developed. So our hope is that we continue to do that. And, you know, it really is about lunch. I mean, it's about so much more than lunch. These guys are cringing right now. But really, the expense is lunch, pretty much.
Yeah, I will say that the funding that goes into Team ASAP, you know, it's, it's grant-funded, but, I mean, I would, I wouldn't want to put it up against the Literacy Lab. I think they're, they're early on. I think we've been working since 2011 and we had nine kids when we first came to you guys and told you about a few things we were trying to bootstrap together, if you will. And I think now, I don't know, clever marketing or whatever it is, I mean, it's, it's, we've built up to a place where, you know, I don't think it costs a lot of money. It does take a lot of work. It takes a lot of work from the faculty. It takes a lot of work from the team. It takes a lot of work from our students. And so that's the end result of kind of listening to kids and helping them, you know, try to give them what they want. It is a lot of work, but I don't know if there's a huge cost attached. And I have full confidence that the Literacy has, listening to Kwanah talk up here, sorry Pete, you were just kind of, you know, sitting there, but listen to Kwanah talk, I mean, she's going to continue to build out that program. And I think I could see, you know, that program becoming more and more robust.
Yeah.
I'm not necessarily in cost, but in terms of like the number of ways that we can serve more and more students. I see that same thing happening to the Literacy Lab. I just think we've been doing this for more years, if that answers the question. And to your initial point, when we don't focus on taking the exam, we saw about 400 less kids take it, unique students take it, you know, on some of those multiple exams they weren't taking. So if we don't really focus on taking the exams, I know for AB CACUS, I'm the math department chair, for AB CAC, we've always said we want everybody to take, you know, AB or stats, you know, as a goal. And if they get a one, awesome, you know? If they get a two, even better. I mean, that says that we've, we've, we've done a little bit more. But I think if we say, ah, don't worry about it, we don't really care, we see the impact of that. And it has a particular impact on our students of color. Oh, the AP exam's not important, like who doesn't take it? Who doesn't work to get a one, to get a two, to get a three? So I think, you know, taking the class, taking the exam, getting a one on the exam, then maybe a two, then maybe a three. I think there's probably, I can do a little air funnel if I want, but I think there's, there's something to be said about, you know, stressing that as a goal and then being fully satisfied if the student has the experience of the AP class, regardless of the score ultimately on the AP exam. Does that answer your question?
I think one of the missing pieces here, and I just want to just make sure I come in and say this, is we have extraordinarily dedicated teachers here and hardworking students. So, you know, they, they work really, really hard and they were way more, it was, it was amazing to have over 1,000 scores of APs three or higher. It was amazing to have so many kids actually take the exam. That's a credit to our teachers really kind of getting kids across the finish line last year. And that's really what it was about. It was about surviving the year and providing the kids with the, the confidence and the ability to feel like they could even enter into that and take that exam.
I think that's an important piece because the, the work is not, the exam is in May. So the work is the, the whole year that, that pays. You're, you're, you're asking kids to do a level of academic commitment. And you're trying to support them around that and, and helping them feel like they belong in these classes that historically have not been available, which is why so many students of color have, who are capable and doing well, haven't even heard of AP. What are you talking about? What does AP mean? What does that stand for? And why is it important? And why should I bother? So, so that's really the work, so.
I just wanted to add something regarding sitting for the exam. So Jody had mentioned earlier the idea of self-efficacy. And both like in literature I've read, as well as like anecdotal evidence of my students in my AP chemistry class, the act of sitting for the exam exponentially increases my students, particularly my students of color's self-efficacy, or in my case, science self-efficacy, because there is something about sitting for that long, difficult exam that when you read a question, regardless of if you know how to answer it or not, but when you recognize it and you feel like, oh, I've seen a question like this before, or we covered this, regardless of whether they feel like, oh, I remember exactly how to do it, their self-efficacy has increased. And so for me, I talk to my students a lot about the importance of taking that exam for exactly that reason. And I explain that I have students who earned a one and went on to U of I to become a chemist, and that's great. So of course, I want all my students to pass the exam, but it's the act of sitting for the exam that I actually care about the most, right? And I think that's the piece, when I think about this whole reset thing, that's the piece that's most valuable to me as an AP teacher.
So I want to underscore what you said, Pete, about the best teachers, the best students, and, you know, quite honestly, the best high school. I think this is, we are it. And I think, I believe totally that we are the ones to get it right. But I can't help but sit here and hear the literacy report and then hear the AP report and not have a visual of the students we're talking about with each report. And so I'm, I'm, I heard the literacy report and automatically I isolated race and I know who we're talking about. I'm listening to AP and even without the graph. And, and the reset, I'm, I'm all for resetting. I'm, I'm for disrupting it. You know, I, I still, I You know, I still isolate race and who we're talking about predominantly, and I appreciate all the efforts to, that we have in place to connect with our black students and students of color, to create a comfortable environment, so not only do they sign up, they stick with it. That's my question every year, you know, that, that they stay with it, and they finish it, and they complete it. I had a son who didn't take the test, for many reasons, but our goal that you reminded us of is to eliminate the predictability, and I couldn't today. So it just validates that we still, not just, I'm not, this is not on the teachers solely. This is, when I talk, I always speak about the community. It takes us all to do this. This is not pointing fingers or anything. This is reminding me, what you did for me, was help me stay connected to the work, because I'm reminded that we have not done this, we have not eliminated this predictability, that it was very, just glaring to me tonight, and I'm sorry I couldn't sit still and hold my peace and not tell you the picture that we painted today, tonight. So I'm, you know, I'm just, I guess I'm, you got me connected in deep, because it, we have so much work to do, and I'm so proud of our students, and I'm so proud, especially of the black students that still struggle through this, as hard as it is to sit there and to finish it completely, because I know the challenges. We heard them when we created this goal. They came and they spoke to us, and they shared their issues with us. But I got a visual, you painted a visual for me tonight. And somehow, the reset needs to dig deep, brr.
Yeah, I appreciate that reminder. You know, we always walk away and say we still have work to do. We have a lot of work to do, and, yeah, you do look at, look at both. I know that three out of every four students, as they walk across the stage, have taken an AP class, so, as Kiwanah was thinking, I'm like, those are our future AP students, how do we make sure that we can start with the 60 students, you know, that she's working with, and how can we really, you know, steward their learning as they come through the high school? But yeah, there's work to be done, look at the charts. I mean, yeah, I appreciate that reminder.
Pat?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Monique, because I think that, as much as you all are doing fabulous work, and we always hear about terrific work you're doing, I think Monique's reminder is to all of us, not just to our fabulous teachers who are already doing so much, but how are we, how are we do, how are we being different as a result of the good and not-so-good things that we see and the work that we need to do? And that's on us, I think, as a board, I think that's on all of us. So, I really appreciate Monique giving us that reminder. And of course, it isn't to take away from, you guys are awesome, and we are so grateful for all of your hard work and for the people that you work with. I guess one of the things I was thinking of as we were looking at the numbers and hearing about all the creativity you're bringing, is, especially given what we're going through and what we've been through, how are you reaching back? So we've done all this work, you know, there was that quote from the AP, I think, College Board that said, you know, invest your, if it's not working at the AP level, invest your money in lower-level classes, and I was thinking, well, we kind of already did that, because we really have built pathways for students to get to you and the work that you're doing. But then I look at that chart, Pete, you put it in two reports, that we have kids in the ninth grade who the last time they were in regular school, they were in sixth grade. I distinctly remember sending my sixth graders to school, and then when they graduated, they were not even remotely the same person. I mean, they were a little kid, and then they were going to high school, and they looked like it. And I just can't get away from that, that you guys have all of this to deal with. So I guess, what is it that you're doing, or you can do, or to kind of, in this difficult time, make sure that we're going into those freshmen and those sophomores, to make sure that we're doing what we need to do? And I know it's not all on you, I mean, maybe you teach freshman, you know, science or something, and that enables you to work on it directly, but how are we systemically kind of making sure that that shoring up and that pipeline is getting what it needs so you can, you know, continue the work you're doing?
Sure, thanks, Pat. One of the things I'd like to say is, like, I have the enrollment data right here for AP courses. I'd like to share that, because I think that's important to know. This isn't the, these aren't the kids who took the test, right? These are the kids this current school year that are enrolled. And it's 42%, well, 58% of, we used to have a situation where 99.5% of our students enrolled in AP were white. Now it's, of all the kids who took AP, now it's 58%. So that's, you know, close to, you know, it's 42% non-white, right? That's pretty, we couldn't have had that number 10 years ago. 13% of the students enrolled in AP are black students, 17% are Latino students, 4.4 are two or more race, and 7% are Asian. So that's a big, you know, we've changed, we've changed the composition of who's in front of our teachers, right? That was one of the goals when we went and we did Earned Honors years ago, was to change that. So we have that, right? That's great, that's progress. You know, we have 162 black students enrolled in AP this year. We have 204 Latino students. That's great, that's wonderful. Now, now that they're there, how do we support them, and how do we keep that pipeline going? Because to your point, right, the kids who are seniors were in ninth grade, right? The kids who are in 11th grade were in eighth grade, and as we go down. So what do we do? You know, we meet, we have to, you know, to steal from Kiwanah, we do meet kids where they are, and we've noticed that behaviorally, there's some gaps, right? Kids have to be resocialized, sort of how to, how to do everything. I'm going to turn it over, just briefly, if any of you guys have any observations along those lines, because you're closer to the work than I am by far in that regard.
So I think that, in terms of the spaces that we've created, particularly with the black AP space, it allows for students who are just thinking about, or have questions about, taking an AP class, to come and to be able to have those conversations with upperclassmen, and for us to be able to encourage them, and to debunk a lot of the mythology around what an AP class is. Because I think a lot of students opt not to take it, because they just don't understand what it is, they're afraid, they think it's going to be so much work that they can't keep up with the other aspects of their life. And it's almost as if we need, like, a strong marketing campaign to the underclassmen, specifically underclassmen of color, I'd say, so that they really understand what the experience is like. And in these spaces, when we meet, the kids are very honest about the joys that they experience in those classes, and some of the struggles that they have, and then we're able to discuss, okay, when you meet those struggles, what can we do, what can you do, right, as an individual, to be able to meet those struggles head-on, and to be able to push through them? And then what can I do as a teacher to help support you in doing that work? And so I'm hopeful that this will allow for underclassmen to really be able to not only see themselves in this space, and then have those conversations with their counselors, but to then be able to be successful once they're there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, go ahead.
I would add in, along those lines, I think, what I'm trying to help our student leaders do, because you said systemically, and systemically is a hard thing, you know, is that, no, we do this event, that event, but that doesn't really, so, organizing the students to discover the power that exists amongst the network of students who can help each other, support each other, hold, you know, create forms of accountability within that structure, is something that I do think can have a systemic impact, when and if it, you know, kind of, there's a, I mean, I'm just excited to see what our students come up with. And I'm also sitting here thinking, this is more general, but the number, like, how much what we need to orient ourselves toward is that we're building something that isn't here yet, as opposed to how much we need to think, oh, we're going to get back to something? Because I do think there's always, when we're talking about racial equity, we're talking about something that hasn't happened yet, not something that we just need to fix. And I, I don't know if those two, those two give me some hope, I don't, yeah, I hope that they work.
I have one little comment. The last couple of board meetings, we've heard from teachers imploring us to pay attention to the number of faculty of color that we hire. And I'm wondering, just for your feedback, on how you think more faculty of color teaching AP courses would influence or positively impact these questions?
Just last weekend, I read an article about just the likelihood of a black student engaging with AP coursework, and this particular article presented the fact that having one black teacher teach any AP course encourages a black student to take whatever AP course. It doesn't even have to be the course that the black teacher is teaching. So I think that is just directly related to what you were speaking about, right? And the importance of having representation in our AP classes for our students to see is important.
As a black teacher teaching an AP class, I know I've had students come to me and say, like, specifically in those AP forums, when students say, "Well, you know, I would love to take this class, can I be in your class?" You know, like, there is, they feel a sense of camaraderie or safety in knowing that, or hoping that they will have a teacher of color, because there is a certain amount of fear in being one of a few students of color in an AP class. And I think there is power for students to see themselves in the educators that they have, and not to say that a white educator couldn't be as effective. Research shows that they absolutely can be, depending on where that teacher is in terms of their identity development, and how that comes through in the curriculum, and how they enact their curriculum. But I think that it's absolutely pertinent for students of color to be able to see themselves in an AP teacher.
I was also a black teacher teaching AP, AP Lit, and I had that same experience that Jody had, that black kids did not want to take AP unless I was their teacher. And I did that for a number of years, and it's still, so many years later, still rings true.
I think my daughter was one of those kids. And she still talks about Marcus, yes, Mr. Campbell. And... Really made a difference. All right, thank you for this report, and so informative, so important. We've heard two extremely important reports, and I just appreciate, again, the work of this team, what you're doing, how you're trying to support these kids, and reset and build this up. I'm very optimistic, of course. So, thank you again. I'll be looking forward to hearing the progress, progress reports. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So...
You know, I just want to lift up that you just saw an example of the caliber of teachers and leaders that we have in this school district. And they're extraordinary, but they represent a lot of extraordinary professionals in this school. And I just want to be sure that folks listening in and watching this understand the power of a school with teachers and professionals like this.
I completely agree. Thank you. Well, that's a good segue to the next item on the agenda, which is the update on the superintendent search. And I guess what I'd like to say as I open this is, first of all, I'd like to invite board members to speak as well, or ask questions. I think that, what I can say about ETHS, there's so much to say, but this is definitely a place where folks really are invested and committed to the students, to the progress, and they want to see, I can, I can see this, want to see the work that has been done and started here over the years continue. So, we're hearing some really good information. I want to emphasize how important we know, as a board, this search is. This is a very important, in fact, I've never been a part of a search before, because we've had so much stability here at ETHS. So it's important, and we also recognize that as the school board, this is our only hire. So this is, this is big for us. It took us some time to select the search firm, and it just took some time, because we want to make sure that we get it right, that we do, that we do it the best way we can. So we're delighted, and I am personally really excited, that we're now partnering with the Alma Group, the Alma Advisory Group, to support this important effort. And so we know the first step is to engage in thoughtful conversations with members of our community, and that's what's been happening. We want to hear what folks have to say. We want to hear their hopes, we want to hear about what they see as the successes at ETHS, their concerns, their aspirations. This is an important step for us to take. And yes, I know that there are so many people who wanted this to be moving faster, but I just, I think we have to take the time that we need to take in order to do this well. So the focus groups are underway, that's really good. Of course, I haven't been attending them, but I've heard some, I've heard about them, because I hear things, I think we all kind of do. So I've been hearing that they're going well, and there'll be others that will be scheduled as well. The survey has been out, and we've extended the survey. So I think Friday, as of, was it Friday? We heard that there were over 1,800 respondents to the survey, so that's really a good, solid number, and it, I'm sure it's gone up by then, since then. So it's going to remain open, the survey now will remain open through the time when the focus groups are meeting. So the survey will be open until, I think, the closing date now is February 17th, because we wanted it to be open, just because we want to give people other options. If they can't make the focus group, they can do the survey, or some people will do There's information on the website about this process, and we want to make sure that that information is there, that it's helpful, and that it's updated on a regular basis. I want to highlight the community focus group, which is going to be meeting February 16th from 6:00 to 7:30. I think I'm right with the time. Okay, thank you. So there's a way to register for that focus group on the website, and would encourage you to do that, and really try to get people to come. These are groups where you'll be meeting with, in smaller groups of maybe 10 or 12, so you're not going to be meeting with these huge groups, but you'll be meeting in smaller groups, because we want people to have the opportunity to talk and to speak. There's also a student focus group, so the students will have an opportunity later in February to meet, meet with the Alma facilitators, and express their concerns, and share their hopes and dreams as well. So, we, as a board, then, will pull together all this information through the Alma Group. We'll be pulling all this information together and meeting to develop a profile, and I'm looking forward to that meeting, where we'll develop a profile, and we will then look at that profile, and we'll determine what our next steps will be as a board. So if we post this position, this position will be posted in March, and the timeline that I'm thinking is... And the timeline that I'm thinking is most realistic is that we would do whatever we need to do to secure this new leader for our district, this very important position. And we'll be able to announce the name of this person or present this person by, I don't know, what do you think, board? Late March, early April? Am I being too optimistic? I'm being too optimistic?
You said post in March.
Yes, probably, yes.
Right.
So then...
But you said announce, you just said announce in March and April.
Yeah, that's probably right. Yes.
Do you mean...
Maybe mid-April. Yes. I don't know. Monique, you've been working with me on this.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I think it takes at least two to three months to go through that process. So if it's posted in March, I'm hopeful by June we'll be able to...
We'll do it then, by June.
We'll be able to announce a new superintendent.
I think we'll do it even sooner than that.
Okay.
So... I'm pushing. Yeah, I mean, you know, we just have to do what we need to do in order to do it thoroughly and do it well. So I just really wanted to take the time to really talk about what we're doing, why we're doing, and what we're going to do with all this information we're getting. So, and I want people to help us get the word out and pass this on. So again, that community focus group is February 16th, so really want as many people there. And the survey, hopefully, folks have participated.
Well, Pat, and I'll add, you know, you requested that the survey be extended.
Yes.
Because I think what is important to us, while having 1,800 respondents is good, we believe that there's more voices out there. And so we're trying to make sure that, that people have enough time. We know that we just came off of, you know, being stressed out over this new variant, and so hopefully, people can now think about the next leader of our school, and will have time to do the survey. So that was one of the reasons why we extended it, because it's, more people definitely get an opportunity to share their opinion. And it also shows that we, while we're trying to get this right before the, you know, the new school year, we want to be thoughtful, and we also want to make sure we are not rushing this process. And so I think that's important, because it is an important duty of the board, so we have to make sure we're not rushing the process and we're allowing it to breed.
Pat, can I just add something?
Yes.
So I really, really want to encourage community members, families, and our students to participate. We selected this group, the Alma group, in large part because they put value in really getting an authentic, clear understanding of what the community as a whole wants for the superintendent and for the district. So we value that, we picked a group that values that, and now we need your help to realize that. And, you know, there's a lot of people, maybe you haven't done surveys very often, or maybe you haven't, you know, participated in a focus group. It's just a conversation. It's, and we, you have a lot to offer. So I really strongly recommend, especially if you're not someone who pipes up a lot, maybe this is your time to really share with us what you think and what you value. And as much as I say that for everyone, I especially want to hear from our students. I have been a part of these types of groups before, and the students always have amazing, powerful, important things to say. And you may say, oh, I don't have anything. Yes, you do.
Yes.
So please come, please be a part of this process, and let us hear your voices, because your voices are going to help us to do the right thing for all of us, and that is to hire the very best person we can to lead this amazing institution. So I can't stress, you know, I can't stress enough that it's important to hear your voices. So thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Pat. All right, thank you. All right, let's move on. We're at item number six. We have five FOIAs. Dr. Beavis, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, we have FOIAs from Sinker, Widener, Emblor, Mendez, and Brooks. And the letters are in your packet.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number seven is comments from the public. Dr. Beavis, do we have comments from the public?
Yes, we do. We have several comments from the public this evening. I'm going to read the guidelines for comments from the public. Speakers who have signed up for public comment will be invited in the order they signed up to address the board for up to three minutes. I will keep time and signal you at the end of two minutes as a courtesy. I'll also let you know when there's one minute, and when the three-minute mark is up, I'll ask you simply to complete the sentence you're on, and we'll move forward. Speakers are asked to come forward to speak at the lectern right here. Please state your name, address. Public comments generally pertain to school district matters, but comments about any individuals are expressly prohibited. So that's very important to understand. We don't comment about individuals, specifically during public comment. Please understand that the school board does not respond to public comments, but that they will listen carefully and will follow up as the board deems appropriate. So first up this evening is Rachel Kern.
Good evening.
So hit the, yeah, there we go. Great.
Good evening, I'm Rachel Kern. I teach German and I'm an instructional coach in the World Language Bilingual Department. I'm also an Evanston community member, and my kids are in District 65, so they will be future little wild kids here in a little, little bit. So as you mentioned, in the past few months, you've heard requests from teachers in several of our departments insisting the board set goals and take intentional action to increase the hiring and retention of BIPOC licensed educators at ETHS over the next five years. As members of the World Language Bilingual Department, we stand with our colleagues and also ask for these goals to be realized. As you already know, only 17% of licensed educators at ETHS are black, and only 7% are Latinx. These numbers do not adequately match the number of black and Latinx students whom we teach, including in our World Language and Bilingual classes. The discrepancy between the amount of black students at ETHS and black educators is especially concerning, since many of our black educators are nearing retirement. We know representation very much matters, we heard that today, we know that to be true. We are sure that you agree that a more diversified teaching staff would be a benefit to all of our students and all of the stakeholders in our ETHS community. However, increasing and sustaining that diversity takes planning, dedication by all parties involved, including the board. We echo the following suggestions for action that other departments have already mentioned, including but not limited to intentional recruitment, incentives for hiring, partnerships with educational programs focused on the needs of BIPOC educators, especially HBCUs, access to supports that address specific needs of BIPOC teachers here at ETHS to help retain them, and a careful review of our predominantly white school culture. As stated in the ETHS Board Statement on Equity, we all have the responsibility to examine and eliminate institutional beliefs, policies, practices, and teaching that perpetuate racial disparities...
One minute.
That perpetuate racial disparities in achievement. Therefore, we ask the board in the spirit to prioritize the hiring and retention of BIPOC educators in order to further our district's vision of equity. Thank you very much for listening tonight.
Next up, we have Adam Held.
Members of the board, I'm Adam Held. You probably know what department I'm in, but I am in the Science Department. As members of this, as a representative of the Science Department, members of the Science Department at ETHS, we, and members of the Science Department at ETHS, we ask that the board set goals for increasing the recruitment and retention of BIPOC licensed educators over the next five years. 17% of licensed educators at ETHS are black, identify as black, and only 7% identify as Latinx. These numbers are far outpaced by the number of black and Latinx students whom we teach. Specific to the Science Department, we have concerns regarding staffing. In total, there are 10 non-white science teachers, which puts us close to an 80% white science teacher staffer staffing. Since it is well documented by educational research that students benefit when they see their own identity mirrored, as we heard tonight, in front of the classroom, the demographics currently at ETHS where only, almost 70% of the teaching staff are white, are bound to favor outcomes that may disproportionately be to the detriment of BIPOC students.
Two minutes.
When it comes to teachers' roles in shaping anti-racist communities, it is better to show than to tell. Society is better off when students see diversity in the ranks of teachers rather than when they hear lessons about the importance of inclusion. All students, not just BIPOC students, all students benefit from teachers of color, as exposures to individuals from all walks of life can reduce stereotypes, prevent unconscious bias, and prepare students to succeed in a global marketplace. We are sure you agree that a more diversified teaching staff would be a benefit to all of us, Evanston community, and we encourage the board to take the following actions. Intentional recruitment of BIPOC educators, partnerships with educational programs throughout the nation, including and especially at HBCUs, incentives for hiring, access to support that address specific needs of BIPOC teachers...
One minute.
And in addition, a potential expansion of the senior leadership program that's currently in the PE department but has not expanded to any other departments in the school, to create a pipeline of black and brown educators that are walking these hallways as high school students. As stated in the ETHS Board Statement on Equity, we all have the responsibility to examine and eliminate institutional beliefs, policies, practices, and teaching that perpetuate racial disparities in achievement. And that's, in this spirit, the board should prioritize the hiring and retention of BIPOC educators in order to heed our district's vision of true equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Darlene Gordon.
Good evening, my name is Darlene Gordon. I teach AP US Government and Politics. I currently teach Personal Finance and Algebra and Entrepreneurship, which is a class geared towards freshmen, where they build businesses using algebraic concepts. I'm just going to write, read pieces of my letter because I don't want to exceed the three-minute limit. But I'm representing the mighty CTE Department, Korean Technical Education here at ETHS. When I started as a CTE teacher in the fall of 2008, there were four black teachers among our ranks. Those educators taught auto mechanics, health sciences, and family and consumer sciences. With my offer of employment as a business teacher, the number rose to four. However, today, there are only two black educators remaining in the ETHS CTE department. A similar scarcity of black educators can be found in other academic departments across our school, and I want to highlight the fact that with a student body of greater than 3,600 and a rate of 25% rate of black students enrolled, so few black educators employed here at ETHS is wholly unacceptable. There's data that supports my request, our request tonight. Black students who have one black teacher by the third grade are 7% more likely to graduate from high school, 13% more likely to enroll in college.
Two minutes.
After having two black teachers, black students' likelihood of enrolling in college increases to 32%. I just wanted to suggest that, and I don't know if the board knows this, in the CTE department, we have a sequence of classes that ETH students can take if they wish to pursue a career in education. We have an Introduction to Teaching sequence, which allows interested ETHS students to enroll and experience a career in education by way of tutoring and using curriculum materials to reach out to students in our, in our school. And then planting the seed in, with current ETHS students today could produce a wonderful bounty of future teachers who are alumni of this high school and interested in going to a career as professional educators. So we must hire and retain more black teachers here at Evanston Township High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Vasilko. Okay. Amy Avrbock.
Hi, my name is Amy Avrbock. I have a 16-year-old here at Evanston Township High School. I have some letters here from Evanston community members that I'm going to be reading. There's six of them in total. They're very short. It will probably exceed the three-minute level, but from what I understand, each letter is ranked differently, so it should be fine.
That's fine. Well, I'll call time at each one.
Sure, yeah, you won't need to.
Go ahead.
The first letter is from Joel Sterstein. Thank you for beginning the process with Facility Engineering Associates to continue a full security assessment of the Evanston Township High School building and its facilities. I look forward to hearing about the FEA team's assessment, as well as hearing about the improvements that may be made at District 202 to increase safety and well-being for all the students and staff. The second letter is from Dana Dodzik. I'm writing as a community member and District 202 parent to share my concern for the safety in students and staff at ETHS. Within four days, Evanston for Safe Schools, a group of volunteer parents dedicated to keeping Evanston schools free of illegal weapons, had more than 200 signatures requesting the board to prioritize this topic and add it to your February board agenda. Thank you for acknowledging that outreach and for your recent communications stating that ETHS will be conducting a security review and analysis. I look forward to hearing more about your learnings from the facility engineering firm and implementation timeline. Please do not hesitate to reach out if I could help you in any way. Thank you for prioritizing the safety of the students and staff at ETHS. The third letter is from Cara and Dan Rudolph. I'm writing as a community member to tell you how very concerned I am about the safety of the students and staff at ETHS. I care deeply about the safety of our students and staff and was pleased to hear you and your team have enlisted an external firm to assess the specific needs of ETHS, including ways to deter, detect, delay, and respond to crisis situations. I look forward to reading the findings and learning from the FEA team, which I hope will include an execution timeline. The next letter, I'm writing from Tara Williams. As a parent of both Districts 202 and 65 children, I'm very concerned about the safety of students and staff at ETHS. Thank you for swiftly enlisting the assistance of a consulting firm to conduct a full security assessment of ETHS school facilities in the wake of the recent lockdown and the discovery of two loaded weapons. I look forward to the results of the assessment to create an effective plan to respond to crisis situations and promote a safer, safer school atmosphere. Thank you for your time. The next letter is from Sarah and Greg Nykruh. There has been a recent uptick in crime in Evanston, and we are increasingly concerned about the safety of the students and staff at ETHS from what we are hearing and what the community is experiencing. We care about the safety of our students and staff and appreciate your efforts to assess the specific needs of ETHS, including ways to deter, detect, delay, and respond to crisis situations. We look forward to learning from the FEA team's findings and hope they take this seriously and act without delay. The next letter is from Teri Lydon. I'm writing as a community member and parent of District 65 to tell how very concerned I am about the safety of the students and staff at ETHS. I care deeply about the staff and our students. I care deeply about the staff and our students and was pleased to hear that you and your team have enlisted an external firm to assess the specific needs of ETHS, including ways to deter, detect, delay, and respond to crisis situations. I look forward to reading the findings and learning from the FEA team, which I hope will include an execution timeline." The last letter is for myself, me. "Thank you for beginning the process with Facility Engineering Associates to conduct a full security assessment of the Evanston Township High School building and its facilities. I look forward to learning about the FEA team's assessment as well as hearing about the improvements that may be made at District 202 to increase safety and well-being for all of the students and staff here. If there's anything that I can do or that Evanston for Safe Schools can assist with during this process, please do not hesitate to ask. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. Mary Rosinski is next.
Hi, thank you. My name's Mary Rosinski. I'm a community member here. I had five kids go through this school, so I've spent about twenty years collectively going through, and I've been very impressed with the school, the staff, the efforts to make Evanston better and more inclusive and more equity. But what I haven't been happy with is the lack of discussion about what's going on with the two HR people, our senior staff that were on paid leave. And I'm wondering how long that's gonna happen for? And are they gonna be paid salaries? I mean, if they're the two top, it looks like we may be talking somewhere, and correct me if I'm wrong, in excess of three-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year. And we could use that money elsewhere. So I would think the public deserves to know what you all plan on doing with that and when that'll be resolved. And also regarding the embezzlement of the fifty thousand dollars, yes, what's going on with that? It's just, we need to be talking about this stuff because if we don't root it out and we're talking financial issues, it just gets deeper. I've studied embezzlement issues and white-collar crime, and it very seldom is a one-time occurrence. So as a resident, a taxpayer, I will hope that you will look into that and then be transparent with the public and let us all know where everything stands and it doesn't just get pushed underneath the carpet. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment for this evening.
Thank you. All right.
Board, I would like to just clarify something that's been made public several times. This district was hacked, and our insurance company actually hired expert national firms to do a forensic audit of that. And they found that an organization outside of this state created criminal activity. And that was the result of that hacking. And they were so satisfied with that, they paid every penny of that loss. It cost this school district zero because we are insured against that kind of criminal activity. And I just want to make that clear because apparently that message has not yet penetrated, and it's very important that people understand, zero, because it was, it was determined that these were criminals outside of this district, in fact, outside of this state.
Thank you for that, Dr. Witherspoon. I appreciate that. All right. So, action items, items for action, item number twelve. The first item is resolution.
No, no. Go back to item eight. I wouldn't mind that.
How did I do that?
But, but, but poor Barbara.
All right, okay. Reset. I like it, reset. I'm gonna use that. Okay, so item number eight, and I have it crossed out too. So, and item eight is where we are. Board Committee Reports. Do we have any Board Committee Reports? I know there's an EdRed meeting on Friday.
You know, can I just say very, very briefly, in the nature of a committee report, I'm the, I'm one of the reps to our Cradle to Career effort in Evanston.
Yes, yes.
And Monique is also intimately involved, and Pete and Eric and so many people here. And I do note, our Prepared for Adult Life Action Team had a meeting recently, and we heard some interesting updates about the mayor's Employment Advisory Group. And those are detailed in those reports that Eric also circulates to the board. But I just wanted to note that we also have in our bill, Payment of Bills section on our consent agenda tonight, our fifty thousand dollar annual contribution to the Cradle to Career effort. And I, I will vote to support that, but I want to know, so that everybody appreciates this, that we, we've now spent, as a district, about five hundred thousand dollars, roughly, give or take a year or two, because I can't do the math, towards this effort. And I think we still have a lot of work to do. And I know that we are, the organization is in the midst of a strategic planning process to sort of reset a little bit. And I think we all should be paying close attention to that, not just me, who goes to the meetings, or Monique, who's involved with the Operations Committee, or Eric, or Pete, who are living it also. I just, this is really important work. We have to get it right. And it's important that this entire community in Evanston get on board to make it the most effective collective impact effort that we possibly can. You know, we've had our ups and downs, and this has been going on for a long time. A lot of money is involved. And it's, it's important that we start actually seeing some results. And I, I think we're hopefully headed in that direction with this new strategic plan. So I just thought I'd tuck that under Committee Report.
That's good.
So that I didn't have to interrupt the consent agenda when the bill list comes up.
Good, good. Yes, things can happen with the strategic plan. Okay, other Board Committee Reports? All right, Barbara, Student Board Reports.
Thank you. So, just to give you an overview of, like, student life, I know a lot of students are excited about the upcoming summits in spring, especially since they're back in person and kind of like full-on. Those include the Black Student Summit, that's this week, the LGBTQIA+ Student Summit, the Middle Eastern Asian and North African Student Summit, and the Latinx Student Summit, which all are happening February, March, and April, I think. So that's gonna be an exciting couple of months for the student body at ETHS. Also, students have submitted their courses for next year, and we're back in person and we're able to connect with counselors after not seeing them last year and having to, like, do Zoom meetings and stuff. Also, I had a really good experience in one of my, like, AP Chem/Phys classes, which kind of relates to what we were talking about today. We were able to, like, invite all of the underclassmen and have, like, an open Q and A with, like, the juniors and seniors who have taken the course. And I think that's super helpful because even I, as a sophomore, I had to ask a bunch of people about classes, especially honors and AP classes, which, like, most people are hesitant about. So I think that went really smoothly and well, and I'm really glad that we could, like, get back to the groove of that. Also, for the Student Focus Group for the Superintendent Search, the email was sent out today, so students can register. It's gonna be on February seventeenth, that Thursday, 4:00 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. And Student Union will spread the word, so we can get a wider representation. We'll be participating, but of course, we want as many students as we can. And also, like, that peer-to-peer connection is really important as well. So we want to make sure to include everybody on that. And then as for Student Union, we have finished sorting through all the student feedback we got from the Witherspoon Forum. So we're trying to kind of decide, like, okay, what things can we solve? What things are kind of, like, worthy of our time and are actually, like, we can, we can solve them? And then we're sorting those into two categories, as in, like, easy fixes, things that, like, I could just talk to Dr. Campbell or Dr. Witherspoon to get about. And then, like, things that take more time and effort, which we might be presenting to the board or, you know, putting more time and effort into that. So we're excited about those projects. And yeah, I think it's gonna be an exciting spring for the students this year.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. Great stuff coming up. All right, Dr. Witherspoon.
Well, thank you for all that, Barbara. Lots of good student leadership, and it really shows here at ETHS. Barbara already lifted up the upcoming Black Student Summit, as well as some of the others in the Social Consciousness Series. The only other thing I'll lift up is a reminder that it is Black History Month, and today kicked off the Black History Month Spirit Week. So quite a bit going on, Board. I forwarded to you the, kind of, the month-long activities. And I think you can see with a lot of student leadership, as well as a lot of adult leadership, we just have a plethora of opportunities during, during Black History Month. Congratulations to our math team, that got a meritorious ranking in the Twenty-Fourth Annual Compaq High School Mathematical Contest in Modeling. This is really high-powered competition, and they just really represented ETHS very well. We also hosted the Empty Bowl event in December. I'm kind of catching up on a few things here. We do that every year. It's a community service activity. It involves our culinary students, as well as our Student Union, as well as our community service folks. And there were more than seventy student volunteers, and the event raised over twenty-five hundred dollars to help people in need of food support. So again, just excellent. Spring conferences are coming up, parent-teacher conferences, a more recognizable term. They will be held again this semester remotely via Zoom. And they're going to be on Thursday, February twenty-fourth, from 1:30 to 4:30 in the afternoon, and again from six to nine in the, in the evening. And both Thursday, the twenty-fourth, and Friday, the twenty-fifth, are non-attendance days for students. So we're getting that reminder out, although that's the one kind of announcement students never miss. Some things, they say, you gotta repeat ten times. You only have to tell that one once. Obviously, you can check out our website for other activities, but I do want to point out that opening night of the winter play, Blood at the Root, is this Thursday evening, February tenth, and will run through Saturday, this Friday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. The annual ETHS Jazz Festival, which actually is a huge event that includes schools from all over, actually the state, to be honest. Eighteen consecutive years now, day-long event, a special evening concert at 7:00 p.m. as well. And that's going to be on February twelfth, so this Saturday, to remind people of that. And we have a Wild Kid Academy coming up this Saturday as well. And a reminder that we will have no school on Monday, the twenty-first, in observance of President's Day. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Okay, this time I am checking the agenda, and we're at item number eleven, the Finance Committee. And there's a mid-year budget review. See Kendra's here. And Mary, I know you're more comfortable with this time, so. We did this for you.
This is late even for us. Well, I think we eliminated three slides today, so I think we're down to, like, ten-ish. So we won't be long. I mean, we could just tell you everything's great and we could all move forward, but we have a little bit of information for you. And so Kendra's just starting.
And Mary, what was that bond rating again?
AAA. And while we're, while Kendra's getting settled, I don't know if I mentioned, but I, I think I mentioned that the bond sale was coming up. It's actually tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. So we'll have specifics by, like, 10:30, so.
We should have gotten our T-shirts made for it.
We swore after we got the AAA rating that we were gonna go get T-shirts and said, AAA, you're welcome. And for everybody who wanted to spend money in the school, you know, we were just gonna walk around and...
I feel like me and Mary love the plan. The only problem is that we're both too cheap to actually spend. Spend the money to make the shirts.
And T-shirts have been my particular soapbox, if you will, over the years.
I won't say cheap, fiscally prudent.
She's worse than me.
All right, so we'll get started with the mid-year budget review. Mary already gave the spoiler that, you know, there's no surprises and that things are in pretty good shape for us. But we'll go ahead and go through and do just a mid-year analysis of the different funds in the budget for you all. And just one thing to kind of frame the conversation and let you know that the mid-year budget review would be our revenues and expenditures through December, because that's kind of, not kind of, that is our halfway mark through the fiscal year. So just, so you know that, although we're in February, we're just discussing what happened up through December. And so overall, budget in good shape. We had our expenditures at fifty-three percent overall, and then our revenues were at forty-five percent. And so as we kind of get into the discussion, we'll even talk about what funds kind of led to there being a little bit of a lag there. So the Education Fund is first up. It is the largest fund that we have and accounts for about eighty percent of our budget. Revenues were forty-eight point eight-six percent as of December, and then expenditures came in at forty-seven point two-two percent. So this was a pretty good match for us, you know, expenditures slightly behind revenues and the largest fund, how we like to see it. I will just kind of provide some additional information that for the fall property taxes, fall, our property taxes would be our largest source of revenue. And for fall property taxes for the Education Fund, we were able to collect a hundred percent of what we budgeted. And so that was really good news for us. We know that, especially during this time, there's uncertainty when you're planning for these things, just trying to figure out, okay, will these payments be coming in as we expect, when we expect, or not? And since they did, we, you know, hooray. But as you guys know, we're oftentimes kind of planning and coming up with these contingency plans, so it's always nice when you don't have to go to Plan B. So for the TORT Fund, revenues are right where we would expect, at forty-nine point two-two percent. Expenditures are at a hundred percent. So I just want to let you know that is actually what we would expect there as well. So for the TORT Fund, the only expenditure that we have in the TORT Fund would be our insurance premiums, and those are paid in the beginning of the year. And so always at this mid-year point, the expenditures are a hundred percent. But then we expect that we would get the other half of those revenues in the second half of the year. Operations and Maintenance Fund. So when it comes to operations and maintenance, revenues are about forty percent, whereas expenditures are at fifty-seven point four-four percent. So we see here that we do have a bit of a difference between the two, where revenues are lagging behind expenditures. And so just wanted to provide you guys with some context on, around that. And so when it comes to the expenditures for the Operations and Maintenance Fund, we have, I'll say we had some front-loaded expenditures this year. We had some things that came up in the beginning of the year, such as a boiler upgrade. We had a tuck pointing issue in the gym wing that had to be repaired. And then also, as we came back to in-person learning and everyone was in the building, we had a lot of expenses related to that, whether it be, you know, putting tents outside so that students were able to have various classes or lunches outside and, you know, spread out in the, around the campus rather than being confined to, you know, just the cafeteria. Or there were also expenses related to air purifiers for classrooms that don't have windows, things of that nature. A lot of expenses just went into making sure that we were doing the best that we could to serve this, serve these students and the staff members in the face of the pandemic. And so with those expenditures, though, we know that we will be able to be reimbursed for them. However, when it comes to CARES relief funds, they are on a reimbursement basis, which means that we spend the money and then you have to get, you have to get reimbursed for them. And so we're expecting those funds to come in as well in the second half of the year. So that's why you're just kind of seeing that there is a lag of revenues as compared to expenditures. So that's why you're just kind of seeing that there is a lag of revenues as compared to expenditures.
And may I interrupt just a second to Kendra to point out against the board because of your good fiscal management. This is why we maintain cash reserves. It's also why we do that so that we don't have to borrow. We can, you know, finance the expenditures. And because, you know, with tax collections and reimbursements and the like, we just oftentimes, you know, have to do things like boilers and that, but we always end within budget at the end of the year. But I want to commend this board because you set a goal years ago about that we would maintain healthy cash reserves, a healthy solvency ratio. And this is exactly an example of why we do that.
And before Kendra moves on, I just, since she mentioned CARES Act funding, I just wanted to say that at the end, I think I'll wait because it doesn't always, it doesn't all relate to the Operations and Maintenance Fund. So I want to just address a couple of points on that, but I'll do that at the end of the slides.
And so for the Bond and Interest Fund, revenues at 40% and expenditures at 84.45%. Again, I just want to address that in these cases where we're seeing such a large difference between the revenues and the expenditures, it's not necessarily because anything is wrong. It's actually exactly where we'd expect it to be. Because when it comes to the Bond and Interest Fund, we pay our principal and interest. The vast majority of it is paid in the, in December payments. And so that happens then and then the remaining 15% approximately would happen in the spring. And so, and those would just be some interest payments that we have left. And so the 84.45 is right where we would expect to be and revenues are as well, are on track with previous years. Transportation Fund, we have revenues of 46% and then expenditures are matching that pretty well, pretty closely at 46.62%. This is also on track with what we've seen in previous years. Only last year where we had the standout, I'm sure all of you guys carry this information with you in your head, but last year, you know, last year in comparison, our expenditures were 8.5% at this time of year, only because we were remote. So we didn't have, you know, many expenditures when it came to transportation. So right now, this is, you know, back to normal, what we're seeing here. And yeah, I R M R F as well, 49.64 in revenues and 45.12 as far as expenditures go. And this is also on track with what we would expect at this time of year with the budget for the I R M R F Fund. So when it comes to the Capital Improvement Fund, we have 6.4 million is the budget for the Capital Improvement Fund, but we know that the vast majority of that would be the bond proceeds, which, as Mary mentioned, is happening tomorrow. And so right there, we're talking about 6 million of it. And so it looks like a very skewed chart if I did try to put that in a diagram for you guys, but you know, that's pretty much the bulk of it. The remainder of the revenues that we've received in the Capital Improvement Fund are really due to the efforts of the E T H S Foundation and the funds that we've been provided through them. And so expenditures are in target with our budget right now and they're really primarily related to summer 2021 projects as far as expenditures go for this fund. And so then we'll also talk about just some budget concerns. You know, we always try to have these things in the back of our mind. Some of the items that we're going to talk about are things that we've mentioned before. And then we just have a couple of updates as well. So current CPI is 5%. That's up from 1.4% last year. And so on one hand, you know, that's great because we know that when we do our levy, that's related to CPI because it indicates how much we're able to levy for. But also when we do levy, it is a blend of two years. And so just something to keep in mind there. And also, you know, sometimes we see these high CPIs, you know, come up, but that doesn't mean that it's going to be sustained for years to come. So we always have to kind of be thinking, okay, it's 5% this year, but could it be 0.4% next year? And what would that look like for us? So, you know, we kind of relish in the moment of 5%, but just also keeping in mind that we know that may not be the case for a long time. And then also, there's always a threat of a property tax freeze. That's something that we've mentioned before, but we know that it exists. And so while it may be kind of looming in the background, we always try to just keep it in our mind when we're making sure to plan conservatively.
And the other thing I would say about CPI is that while it's good that our tax levy can go up, it also means that the costs we're paying for things are going up. So we're seeing that across the board in everything that we do, food to, you know, salaries.
Correct. And so actually on this next slide, just to kind of build on that, when we're talking about the lasting effects from the pandemic are yet to be seen, that would be one case, right? So inflation, we also are subject to inflation like everyone else. And so we have to be mindful of that right now. For example, when it comes to transportation, we have our contracts with our vendors, but we know that when we go back out to bid for those contracts, and these are large ticket items that we'll have to go out to bid for again, that we may be seeing increases there. And so we have to keep that in mind. I think everyone's heard about the bus driver shortage. And so we're going to feel that when we go back to the table. And so those are just, then that's just one example of, you know, things that we also have to keep in mind that, yes, sometimes it feels like we might be getting out of this sometime soon, but there's going to be lasting effects and ripple effects that we're going to have to contend with as we plan for the future. And then also pension shifts, I feel like we have been talking about this for years. And, you know, we hope and pray that one day everybody's going to be like, you know, we've got our act together and there's no worry about a pension shift, but that announcement hasn't come yet. And so until then, we continue to make sure that we understand the implications that that would have for us and plan for it accordingly.
So Kendra was so excited to present that information that she took my slides. I was supposed to have the last couple of slides, but it's okay.
I'm going easy on Mary tonight.
I'm old and it's late, so she figured she needed to help me out. So the last quick update that we would have would be regarding CARES Act or what has been now known as ESER funding. And so there were three rounds of ESER funding announced. And so we just wanted to give you a little update on the first two rounds primarily and then let you know that we've been gathering a lot of information about the final round. And we want to gather some additional information. And so I think the plan since our next meeting is a joint board meeting. I think the best plan would probably be to come back to you to have a discussion at the March meeting because we're getting to a point where we need to start talking about getting that application in and, you know, publicizing how we'll use those funds. I will say that the Operations and Maintenance Fund that Kendra referred to, the shortage in the revenues does have to do with some money that we allocated from the third round of CARES Act funding. And that would be primarily for some capital expenses, like capital improvements, you know, refurbishing, remodeling. And so we'll talk to you a little bit more about that in March. I don't want to say remodeling because that's not really the point of ESER money. Just, you know, making sure that our building is safe and sound in light of everything that we've gone through with the pandemic. So backing up to the first two rounds of ESER money, just kind of a little update in the rearview mirror. The first round was $290,000 for our district. It came out pretty early in the pandemic, I think, spring, late spring of 2020. And just to kind of let you know how that money was spent, everyone was scrambling at that point, as you can imagine. We were working remotely. We had a lot of staff who had not been issued laptops, even Chromebooks in some cases. So that first round of money was spent on internet bandwidth, some initial hotspots, computers, a lot of P P E. We did end up getting some FEMA reimbursements for P P E of about $18,000. FEMA was very strict on their reimbursements and anything they gave you, they wouldn't cover anything that had any value at the end of a pandemic. So it was basically gloves, masks, and hand sanitizer. So we did get a small FEMA reimbursement. But our first round of COVID money primarily went for the things I mentioned, along with a lot of summer curriculum planning. Like I think back to the summer of 2020, it seems like so long ago. But, you know, teachers spent a lot of time working on curriculum projects to figure out how school, what it would look like in the fall. So that was the first round of $290,000. That's been applied for and received. And then the second round was 1.06, 1,630,000. And the biggest chunk of that money, I would say, was spent on technology and outfitting our 250 classrooms for the capability of that technology. The classroom setup alone was about $210,000 and that doesn't include any computers. That was cameras and microphones and all the tools that teachers needed from, you know, a table that had an adjustable height to, you know, the Plexiglas that went around it. And so our I T team really went through and assessed what each classroom setup needed to be and then accomplished that over a pretty remarkable period of time. But in addition to that, we were able to put one year's purchase of Chromebooks in that round of funding. We were able to purchase the final amount of school-issued laptops that were needed, staff, parapros, people who still didn't have or had outdated equipment. So we were able to do a lot of technology. We also paid for last summer's summer school salaries with that second round of ESER money. As you know, most classes were offered to students and families at no charge. I think there were very few classes that even had a fee associated with them. We also did some things like air quality testing, the tents outside, and purifiers and P P E. And a good chunk of that money has been received as part of the reimbursement, but there's still the last part of that second round that we're gathering all the expenses and filing for. The nice thing is there was a long eligibility period and there's the ability to, I'm going to say retroactively be reimbursed, which is not typical with a state grant program. So that's basically how Rounds 1 and 2 were spent and filed for as far as reimbursements. We were actually already audited on the first round because it coincided with an audit from ISB. So Kendra and I were working on that remotely right after COVID started. While we were still out in May of 2020, we finally just wrapped that up like yesterday. So that round has already been audited by the state. So that is our update. I will be happy to take any questions.
Thank you.
And I'm going to apologize, sorry, I know there might still be a question, but I'm going to apologize in advance for the next item on the agenda that has a three-line title. I did not write that for the resolution for the bonds.
I think that's why I started so early because I saw that.
Is that why you're going to cut me out, Pat?
A direct quote from our attorneys and I don't question attorneys when it comes to that kind of thing.
They use a lot of words.
I apologize in advance that you have to read that.
Okay, questions from the board? Anybody? Very thorough. Wonderful. Thank you.
Sorry, I know it's late, but we tried. Thank you.
All right. Okay, now I can go to the next item. Turn the page. Okay, the next item is action items. Our resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $6 million general obligation limited tax school bonds, Series 2022, for the purpose of increasing the working cash funds of the district, providing for the levy of district annual tax to pay the principal and interest of said bonds and authorizing the proposal sell of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item is approval of Facility Engineering Associates, or F E A, part-time contract.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. The next item is Women in History Month and Stephanie's going to read that for us.
Women's History Month, March 2022, National Women's History Alliance theme for 2022. Women Providing Healing Promoting Hope. The 2022 Women's History theme, Providing Healing Promoting Hope, is both a tribute to the ceaseless work of caregivers and frontline workers during this ongoing pandemic and also a recognition of the thousands of ways that women of all cultures have provided both healing and hope throughout history. Women as healers hearken back to ancient times. Healing is the personal experience of transcending suffering and transforming it to wholeness. The gift of hope spreads light to the lives of others and reflects a belief in the limited possibilities of this and future generations. Together, healing and hope are essential fuels for our dreams and our recovery. This year in particular, we are reminded of the importance of healers and caregivers who are helping to promote and sustain hope for the future. Communities throughout the country are encouraged to honor local women who bring and have historically brought these priceless gifts to their families, workplaces, and neighborhoods, sometimes a great sacrifice. These are the women who, as counselors and clerics, artists and teachers, doctors, nurses, mothers and grandmothers, listen, ease suffering, restore dignity, and make decisions for our general as well as our personal welfare. Women have long advocated for compassionate treatments and new directions in public health and in women's mental and physical health. Women have also historically led the way in mending divisions, healing wounds, and finding peaceful solutions. This timeless work in so many ways and in addition to so many other tasks has helped countless individuals in our communities recover and follow their dreams. The 2022 theme proudly honors those who, in both public and private life, provide healing and promote hope for the betterment of all. The President of the United States has proclaimed March 2022 as Women's History Month to celebrate with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities that honor the history, accomplishments, and contributions of American women. Therefore, we, the District 202 School Board, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2022 as Women's History Month at Evanston Township High School.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution, please?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. The next item is Consent Agenda. It consists of approval of resignation agreement and general release between the Board of Education and Assistant Chief Human Resource Officer, approval of retirement agreement and general release between the Board of Education and Chief Human Resource Officer, approval of minutes from January 18th, 2022, closed session meeting, approval of January 18th regular meeting, close, regular meeting, sorry, approval of bills and personnel report.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, next item is Old and New Business. Do we have any old or new business to report? All right, closing. Anything else you'd like to add, board members? If not, can I have a motion for adjournment?
I move for adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned at 10:25 P. M.